Can you hear me?
Bring it closer.
Can you hear me?
Bring it closer.
Okay, I think that works. All right, good morning, everyone. Thank you for braving the elements to come talk with us about planning our future, our year to come. So, thank you and welcome to our annual planning session. Isn't this a perfect thing to do on a rainy day? I mean, what would you rather be doing? And I thank staff for being here as well. Thanks to our residents and staff to participate in important planning. I do want to say, just as we begin today, why this is important. And it's important that the community engage in what staff and the county or elected representatives are looking to do for the city, for all of you, in the year to come. And it's important that we set priorities. We have a lot on our plate, particularly this year and in the next few years with our general plan update. So, it's really important that we all get on the same page with what we are doing in terms of maintaining our quality of life. And as I've spoken many, many times, and just to establish a framework around our strategic planning, our planning process, I want to just keep in front of us fiscal discipline, public safety, always supporting our fire and police and lifeguard employees and their work that they do for us, protecting our waters, our beaches, our bays, and creating an environment where public and private investment can thrive and continue to be focused on our quality of life. So, that is the strategic framework that will inform our thought process. And you'll hear presentations today about the financial strength of the city that allows us to be able to afford investments in our city. And you'll hear about our capital investments and our programs to continue our quality of life. So, without further ado, Madam Clerk, do we want to -- oh, I guess you'll do roll call first.
Yes. Let the record reflect that Councilmember Duffield has an excuse absence and Councilmember Muldoon will be arriving late.
And Councilmember Avery will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, if you would, please.
And join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic through which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and indelible, just as it is.
All right, let's begin. We'll have public comments on non-agenda items. Please come forward. And I just want to point out, on items on the agenda today, there will be public comments for each item. So, in these comments, these are non-agenda items, and please state your name, please.
Hi. I'm Dr. Anne Marie Fine. City council members, thank you so much for your time this morning. I am a doctor in Crono del Mar. I focus on environmental medicine. And in my -- I also teach physicians environmental medicine. This is a new emerging specialty that deals with the chemicals that we are accumulating in our body and that are causing problems. So, today, I just wanted to just say a few words about pesticides, which is one of those toxins that we have control over by making better choices. So, this is something that we can do about, some of the things in our environment we can't do anything about. So, next slide. We have a history of DDT being used in the world and in our country. And this is something that even though it was banned in the 70s, I find it -- I test in my office for many, many chemicals, and pesticides are among the class of chemicals I test for. And I find DDE, the metabolite of DDT, in 99% of my patients still, even though it's been banned since the 70s. So, some of these toxins get into our bodies and we simply pass them on to future generations. Next slide. And so, this is Dawn Huber, who's a professor of plant pathology at Purdue University. And he's talking about a newer glyphosate, which has very much been in the news recently. And basically, he believes this may be the DDT of the 21st century. So, this is something to keep in mind. Next slide. Next slide?
My screen's not.
Oh, frozen?
We can all gather around your computer, I guess.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. So, the DDT came in a class of pesticides called organochlorines. The organophosphates are really what's being more used today. And the most vulnerable population is the fetus, because we're now finding that the babies are born already toxic. They're already containing pesticides and BPA and flame retardants and heavy metals and things like that. So, the prenatal exposures are associated with reduced birth weight, head circumference, gestational length. And then, they're also been linked with -- the main one that stands out for me is the lowered IQ, because this is something that can follow a child all the way through life, but developmental disorders as well. Next slide. So, the official journal of the American Academy of Pediatrics, which is a very conservative journal, has actually come out with a consensus statement that basically says -- next slide. Oops, the next slide isn't there. So, I'll just tell you what they said. They basically are now recommending for children that they be exposed to as few pesticides as possible. And so, adults and organophosphate exposures also have potential health risks as well. Next slide. And so, one of the things I want to mention is that my kids are grown, but when my kids were school age, we -- our schools posted when they were going to spray the pesticides. And I kept my kids home that day, which was once a month, every day, for the whole time that they were in school. And I think it would be better policy to just not spray these toxic chemicals in the schoolyards. That's it. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Any other comments, please come forward.
I don't have a comment. I'm the next person to make a presentation.
You have a PowerPoint?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Hi. My name's Kathleen Halal. I'm the co-executive director of Non-toxic Communities. I'm an Irvine resident, PTA member. I still work at the state level in advocacy for children's concerns. I have three boys who play on the sports fields all over Orange County. And I initiated the changes that took place in Irvine. Next slide, please. Parenting is different now. When I was a kid, I didn't know anyone who would die from something they ate. Now, that's very common. In my own family, we deal with peanut allergies and bee sting allergies that are anaphylactic. These kids can die within 30 minutes of eating something. That's a new condition. And this is my friend who made this meme. Her name's Robin O'Brien, founder of Allergy Kids. And the number at the top, 1 in 68 U.S. children has autism, has now gone to 1 in 59. That number is already out of date. The numbers of children's chronic illnesses are escalating at an alarming rate. Next slide. This is a copy of the Orange County Department of Education budget, Studies for Special Ed's Needs. In case you think that maybe it's just better diagnosis, or you want to write off what's happening to our kids, here it is in real numbers. The schools in Orange County are spending now over $1 billion, with a "B," on special ed needs for students. And the color graph at the bottom shows the trajectory of spending, what they have spent between 2002 and 2018. And that trajectory is not slowing down. And the angle of that graph, that sort of hockey stick, is the same if you look at studies for children's asthma, diabetes, any other physical illnesses, neurological problems. This is what's happening with our children's health. Next slide, please. This is some kids playing in front of our children's school, Vista Verde. It's right over the hill. It's right by Mariners. This is what first woke me up to kind of thinking, gee, is there something we could do to help these kids out? So, the kids are playing in the dirt right after they had sprayed Roundup in the tree wells around the trees. The dirt was still moist. I knew those kids were going to get in the car and have snack. There were parents standing around, and nobody really noticed the warning signs. And I thought to myself, this probably isn't a great idea. Next slide, please. So, in my journey, people would tell me a lot of things. And so, I found out there were a lot of myths, and then there were actually truths. The biggest one that I discovered was that the EPA does not decide whether or not products are safe. I used to think that. I used to think it was black or white. And then, I met a bunch of EPA scientists, and I spoke with them. And they actually wrote letters to Irvine, and I can get them for you as well. But what the EPA does is it weighs the number of people that will be harmed or injured by a product against the economic benefit of that product. So, if a product is listed by the EPA, if it has an EPA number, that means it's toxic.
Excuse me, we've hit the time limit. Can you wrap up your comments?
Yeah, next slide. So, maintenance guys always say they're only using a tiny amount, but that's ounces that become gallons. That's of concentrate. And these are the chemicals from the California Department of Pesticides that are used around kids typically. Next slide. There are lots of -- there is a ton of science on this, and I will supply everything you might like to it. But this is the EPA, professors everywhere, universities publish studies. I can get you the science that these tiny exposures affect kids' development. Next slide.
Yeah, we actually need to hold you to three minutes, so.
Okay. I'm almost finished.
Well, like, 10 seconds, please.
Okay. Next slide. I think that's it. Okay. This is Vista Verde School. This is right by Mariners. You could see before and after. Before, when the fields were chemically treated, they were dirt patched and bad, and now they're beautiful, gorgeous fields.
Okay, okay. Thank you. And we do have to keep to our three minutes per person. Next speaker, please.
Hi. Good morning, council members. My name is Vanessa Handy Armstrong. I was born and raised in Newport Beach in Costa Mesa and attended Newport Mesa's schools. My three children currently attend Harbor High in Ensen and my son sails at the Babo Yacht Club. The real truth about how these pesticides affect our health is scary, and I cannot express enough how important it is to eliminate the city's use of toxic pesticides. Newport Beach currently uses 14 herbicides. Two of these products, Roundup and Speed Zone, are applied regularly in conjunction on Newport parks. Speed Zone's active ingredient is 24D, which was an active ingredient in Agent Orange. It is blanket sprayed on parks, sometimes every two weeks. Roundup is applied almost daily around Newport, including the perimeter of the Back Bay, a nature preserve. By working closely with elected officials and staff, I have come to learn the concerns of changing to an organics-first policy. Two common questions were, can we maintain beautiful landscapes organically and what will it cost? The answer is yes. You can absolutely meet Newport's high expectations for beautiful landscapes organically. Over two years ago, Newport Mesa Unified completely eliminated all herbicides. They use various methods, including prevention, hand-pulling, weed-whacking, and most recently, a steam machine. Their staff pesticide applicator, initially resistant to the change, now enjoys his new responsibilities creating organic solutions and has found a renewed sense of ownership and job satisfaction. The city of Costa Mesa passed an organics-first policy two weeks ago -- I hope, very proud of that -- after a year of a pilot program. They eliminated non-organic pesticides, switched to organics, and were able to balance costs with out-of-the-box thinking and continuous manipulation of the organics program. This is a direct quote from Costa Mesa city staff. "We have managed to change our program and not affect our budget's bottom line." In addition to switching to organic herbicides, Costa Mesa is in the first year of an organic field renovation, where initial costs are higher, but costs and water usage decrease over time. The champion of a successful organics-first program is the city of Irvine. Since 2016, they have solely relied on organic land management concepts. While Irvine and Costa Mesa are model programs, there are dozens of other California cities currently moving in an organics-first direction. And as these cities eliminate toxic pesticides, the change becomes smoother, with less of a fiscal impact for those that follow. If Newport's current contractors are not able to provide organic landscaping practices, there are companies that do. Additionally, organics-first training is increasingly becoming available. I'm ending here. We ask that Newport Beach immediately halt the applications of glyphosate and 24D products and start the conversation of an organics-first pathway. This is an issue that impacts every citizen and pet in Newport Beach, not to mention the delicate coastal environment we all call home. This is an opportunity for the community to work with elected officials, facilitate progress that benefits the health of the entire community, and most importantly, to do the right thing. Weeds won't make us sick, but pesticides might. What is more important, protecting our health or using toxic pesticides to kill a weed? Thank you for your time, and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you so much. Next speaker, please. Come forward.
Hello. My name is Jennifer Irani. I am a resident of Newport. I'm a substitute teacher for special education. So, I work with a lot of these kids that do have autistic, like behavior, nonverbal, and so forth in the Newport Mesa School District. My daughter attends Newport Harbor, and I'm very involved with the community and intend to continue to do so. I am speaking for all of the parents and the residents and all of you that are here -- that can't be here today and are here today in defense of our children, pets, and community that we work, play, and live in. I am here today because I want to protect our children and pets from exposure to cancer-causing agents like glyphosate and active ingredient in Roundup and other pesticides that Newport Beach uses. Think about that. We have been under the assumption that if a pesticide is on the market, then it must be safe. However, the findings of emerging science indicates the opposite. Pesticides are far from safe. Remember DDT and Big Tobacco. These were proven carcinogenic after many lives were lost and some of my family members as well, and I'm sure some of yours. In order to register a pesticide, the EPA only requires a 90-day study from the pesticide manufacturer, not from independent peer-reviewed scientists. Who are you going to believe? Independent peer review or those profiting? California added glyphosate to Prop 65 list of chemicals known to cause cancer. I don't want to ask what child will be next victim. I don't want to talk to my friends about how their pets are sick. And for all of you that want to develop in Newport Beach, it comes from the ground up. If the ground is pesticide-saturated, what are we building on? What kind of community are we building on when our kids are sick? You might have nice buildings, but you're not going to have healthy people. And that's more important. And it's time for this city to get on board with this. The real cost of using these pesticides has arrived. The in-historical California lawsuit, the court ordered a plaintiff 79 million in damages, including glyphosate causes -- proving that glyphosate causes non-Hodgkin's lymphoma. The manufacturer and the EPA, our own EPA, knew of this to be true and conspired to conceal the evidence from the public. That's all of you. Don't take your democracy for granted. Newport Beach can still meet the residents' high expectations for beautiful landscapes without the use of pesticides. Costa Mesa and Irvine have proven this to be true.
Could you please wrap it? Thank you.
This is an opportunity for all of you in city council, our elected officials, to get in front of this issue. And we are not going away. We will be here to help you. We will be here to make this present and keep it on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, members of the city council. My name is Catherine Young, and I've been a resident of Newport Beach since 1983. And I raised two children. I have four grandchildren here in Newport. Now, I'm going to speak about the Johnson versus Monsanto lawsuit. This attorney, that was the trial attorney that won this case, was 38 years old, a young attorney. But he had a passion for exposing Monsanto, because his father marched with Chavez. And how did this young attorney become the trial attorney? Well, the senior trial attorney had an accident, a boat accident, and he could not continue. So, he asked this young attorney to take up the project. And so, this young attorney had this boldness, that he asked for the internal documents of Monsanto. And the senior attorneys of their firm said, no, that's a waste of time. You're going to lose everything. But he surged forward. And when Monsanto got that request, they told the attorney, Brian Weschner, to go away. And through their arrogance, they forgot to respond to that request. And so, Monsanto had to turn over the papers. And what you see in those papers is how Monsanto rigged and deceived and changed -- actually, ghostwritten, changed the documents. And all this could be seen on responsibletechnology.org with Jeffrey Smith. I recommend -- it's a story. It's a David and Goliath story, how this young attorney accomplished this goal. And now, there's 3,000, I think, 3,900 cases of other injured plaintiffs. And there's 620 cases before the judge in San Francisco. And now, Monsanto does not want Brian Weschner to try other cases. They don't want him as a plaintiff, because he knows so much about the science. So, I just want to tell this story and ask the council to just take time and look up this case. It is such an interesting story. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Amanda, and I'm a beekeeper. That's the leggings. I'm a researcher. I'm an organic-certified lawn care professional. And I had done this all because of environmental illness. I was a victim, and now I'm a survivor. And I haven't come to tell my story, because that's for another time. I teach on pollinators. And this summer, I got to work with a researcher, a biologist, who focuses on pesticides. We were actually collaborating on a study about the impact of pollution on pollinators. And so, he has worked on a study, and he showed how low environmental exposures impact the migration of our birds. And we're facing, according to scientists, a sixth mass extinction. In 2014, a Dutch study showed that pesticides were linked to a 35% decline in bird populations. In 2016, the United Nations issued a report that said that over 16% of our invertebrate -- I mean, our vertebrates, that's birds, bats, are facing extinction. The sad part was that over 40% of our invertebrates are facing extinctions. Bye-bye butterflies, bye-bye bees. And that includes over 1,600 native bees in California that are specialists that only pollinate specific plants. So, we lose those bees, we lose those native plants as well. And this -- the UN Task Force declared that overall, a compelling body of evidence has accumulated that clearly demonstrates that the wide-scale use of these chemicals is having a widespread chronic impact upon global biodiversity, and that there is an urgent need to reduce the use of these chemicals and to switch to sustainable methods that do not further reduce global biodiversity and that do not undermine the ecosystem services upon which we all depend. Germany study? You think that sanctuaries are going to keep our insects safe, our wildlife safe? No. All across Germany, over 27 years, they thought they were safe. They found out that over 75% of their insect biomass declined in that 27 years in sanctuaries. And they surmise that because the habitat around it did not change in that 27 years, that it was the increase in the use of pesticides. That's the basis of the food chain. Let's think about the impact of our biomass disappearing. In 1993, the European Union adopted the precautionary principle. And in 2003, San Francisco instituted precautionary principle ordinance, which states that there is a duty. It is our duty to take anticipatory action to prevent harm.
Could you please conclude your comments?
Yes. And that was the basis of it, is that we are just urging city officials to use that precautionary principle to change to organic pest management techniques to further help our communities be healthier environments.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers who will be speaking on pesticides this morning?
Yes. To make it very short, Nancy Gardner. Last summer, the Natural Communities Coalition, formerly known as Nature Reserve of Orange County, issued a BMP on use of pesticides endorsed by the wildlife agencies. It was provided, Dave Kiff, I don't know if it's been provided to staff, but I will -- and it obviously goes, you know, pesticide-free on everything where kids and people are in constant contact. I'll be glad to provide it to the staff if they do not have it at this point.
Thank you. All right. Any other public comments on this or any other item? Please come forward.
Mayor Dixon and members of the city council, my name is Jim Mosher. I have nothing to say about pesticides. I did have two very brief, non-agenda comments. The first one is I think it's always important in planning to reflect on what the outcome was of the last year's planning session. And I wanted to remind the council that the resolution that was adopted last February memorializing the goals that were set at that session had three points in it. One of them was to complete the implementation of the harbor department, which has been accomplished pretty much, and possibly to look at a revision of the harbor code, which I think is still in progress. The second outcome of the last planning session was to postpone the listen-and-learn part of the general plan update to this year, which is in progress. And the third point was to pursue a harbor master plan, which didn't come out quite as the council was hoping it would come out a year ago. And so, I'm just reminding you, I hope that we will today be discussing more feasible objectives than that one. The second comment I wanted to make is there are many things being presented in the PowerPoints you're seeing today, but I have the impression that the council members have ideas of their own for what the city, and in particular, the city council, should be working on in this coming year. They don't seem to be part of the agenda today. I hope they will be pursued in some fashion during the year. And one of those I wanted to bring your attention to, because I believe I've heard all of you say that this is an important thing we should be working on, is election reform in a non-election year. And 2019 is a non-election year, and so, I hope something on that will finally happen this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on non-agenda items? Please come forward.
Mayor, city council, Bernie Swalstad, chairman of the Cronomar Business Improvement District. Not going to talk about pesticides. Anyway, the chamber and the city's been so generous in the last five years trying to grow dolphins at PCH and Marguerite, because the dolphins there are kind of fading away and somewhat degenerating. It hasn't worked well. We had, I think, one group of dolphins that were growing, and that didn't work. Second group was growing, and that didn't work very well. So, the city decided to move those deteriorating dolphins over to the city yard, and they are not doing real well. So, it's kind of exciting, the bid meeting. We had Dave Webb there and our board. And we decided to have a project that might be worked out, provide different dolphins, that would be a different texture of some sort. Might talk to Wieland about the dolphins, set up a subcommittee. And we have 501(c)(3) in Cronomar that I brought forth in 204. And I think we could use that to bring in money to purchase some type of better dolphin situations, the bid.
Any other public comments on non-agenda items? Please come forward.
Mayor, City Council, Bernie Swalstad, chairman of the Cronomar Business Improvement District, not gonna talk about pesticides. Anyway, the chamber and the city's been so generous in the last five years trying to grow dolphins at PCH and Marguerite because the dolphins there are kind of fading away and somewhat degenerating. It hasn't worked well. We had, I think, one group of dolphins that were growing, and that didn't work. Second group was growing, and that didn't work very well. So the city decided to move those deteriorating dolphins over to the city yard, and they are not doing real well. So it's kind of exciting, the bid meeting, we had Dave Webb there and our board, and we decided to have a project that might be worked out, provide different dolphins, that would be a different texture of some sort. Might talk to Wyland about the dolphins, set up a subcommittee. And we have five oh one C three in Cronomar that I brought forth in two oh four. And I think we can use that to bring in money to purchase some type of better dolphin situations, bid, have funds, and maybe the city provide funds, and come up with kind of unique type of interesting, exciting dolphin program. So we have Scott LaFleur of Sherman Gardens leading this committee, subcommittee, and we're gonna work on that project. So kind of look at it in the future. I think it'll be kind of exciting to see what we can come up with. Thank you.
Well, thank you, and I hope everybody realizes what we're talking about landscaping, landscape dolphins.
Right, Margarine PCH.
We're not in the dolphin cultivation, but that would be fun. Thank you, Bernie. Any other comment, public comments on non-agenda items?
Happy Saturday morning. So this is great. Everybody's volunteering here. I have really liked some of the public comments on the, no, that's not the one I want to speak on, later. Some of the public comments about the general plan update, so I would like to give my two cents, too. City of Santa Cruz gave a presentation at UCI, talked about their outreach plan, actually they did it already. So their outreach for Climate Adaptation Plan Update, in nine months, they did fifty events. So this document is really well documented. I'll give two examples, just things they documented here. They, I mean, obviously, they use all kinds of venues, and they use a library heavily. One is that the library's the hub, and they have their own network, they know how to promote events. They also use a software called Poll Everywhere. See, typically, an outreach event like this will use paperwork. We have people to write out their thoughts, or we wait for people to speak. You have posted, that kind of thing. So the problems are, one, some people are shy, and they think, what I want to say, other people already know. Or there's not enough time for people to say the stuff. Or you end up, you know, you go home with a stack of paperwork you have to deal with. So I thought that was really cool. I tried it at my event. It's interactive. When you put a question on the screen, people can answer the question even by texting. So everyone's answers are shown on the screen. So that encouraged other people to think, to be engaging. And I was really happy that by the end of the night, I got home, I didn't have to do the paperwork. All the data was stored already, and I can use it later on. So that's my little idea.
Well, that's a great idea. Thank you. I think, I, I hope we will be using some interactive technology as we go forward with our general plan update. Any other public comments? All right, we have a public comment from Mr. Muldoon. Here, let me.
For the group of individuals who came to speak on pesticides, I actually got an email a couple of days ago, a timely email about Irvine's doing, they're using goats. I don't know that Newport Beach will be using goats, but I do plan to intend staff to suggest alternatives to phase out some of the pesticides and start using organic alternative. Staff was sort of already been working on this project. So if you have an interest or specific suggestion, please, at the break time, which will be a little bit, little bit later today, please offer them the staff so we consider them at a subsequent council meeting. Thank you.
Very good. Any other comments?
Diane, Diane, can I add one thing? I was just at a League of Cities conference for the last three days in, at the Irvine Marriott, and they used Poll Everywhere to get us to answer questions. It was so easy. And I believe you can limit it by geographic area or things like that, so it would be an easy way for us to get feedback from our citizens on a continuing basis. And I'd like to see us really pursue that.
Yeah, I agree. You know, that technology, all kinds of that interactive, it has been available for a while. I think it's time that we get into that. So good idea. Thank you. Any other comments from the dais? Seeing none, let's proceed. So our first item on our agenda this morning is an update on fiscal issues. We have city, the city manager and our finance director going to both speak. Thank you.
Can you hear me? Is that good? Okay. Good morning, mayor and city council. I'm very excited to be here. This is my first planning session, so in some ways, I hope I didn't make a rookie mistake by putting too much on this agenda. But I think it's really great to have this opportunity at the beginning, as we're developing our recommended budget, to get input and thoughts and direction from both the community and from city council.
Can everybody hear?
No, I'm sorry. And I was told to talk louder. How's that? Okay. Hold this up to me. So, but I do have a full agenda, so we're gonna try to move expediently as we can through this and to have as much time for comments. So what I'd like, especially on these first three sections, is to go through the presentation, and at the end of each section, leave time for the comments and, and input there. Of course, if there's clarifying items, we can, of course, stop at those points. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Dan to begin on providing a quick overview of our fiscal status.
Thank you, Grace. I think you heard my marching orders, which are move expediently. So, here we go. Okay, so this slide speaks to how we finished the last year. So we ended, we ended the year with a thirteen million dollar budgetary surplus, and we did this while maintaining a forty-nine point one million dollar contingency reserve, which represents twenty-five percent of our operating budget. I tend to focus on these two numbers in particularly, rather than the total change in fund balance or the other categories of fund balance. But before we start moving on to how, before we finish or move from how we ended the fiscal year, are there questions before we start our look forward?
So the mayor's asked me real briefly to just give a quick, we have a finance committee in the city. You're always welcome. It's a public meeting. I'm the current chair. Mayor Dixon was the chair for the last few years. And so when we're talking about contingency reserve, that typically means that it's a, the goal, actually, we spent about a year in the finance committee reviewing that. The contingency reserve is essentially a, it's a catch-all. It, right now, we've set it at twenty-five percent of the general fund budget, the idea being that if there was something catastrophic, that would be at least three months of payroll and other expenses that we would need, which of course would be probably extended beyond three months. But right now, when you're looking at the contingency reserve, that's twenty-five percent. And also note real briefly, that thirteen million dollar surplus came after we had also included, and I know you'll talk about pensions, but that came after we had also made a discretionary payment above and beyond what our required amounts were in the pension system. So this is, this is pretty good economic news.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, both of you, for that clarification. Moving on to our forward look. So property taxes are the city's number-one revenue source for the city, represents half of all general fund revenues at nearly sixty billion dollars. Newport Beach has the second-largest assessed valuation in the county, even larger than Anaheim, that has a population of over three hundred and fifty thousand. With twenty years, with a twenty-year average annual growth of seven percent, we believe our growth assumption for nineteen twenty at five point one percent to be very conservative while we build a budget around that growth number.
Dan, let me just make an additional comment. Thank you, just to put some background to these numbers, just so everyone knows, because we all pay property taxes, and we write a big check, and we do this every year, about sixteen point nine or seventeen percent of the payment that you write to the Orange County treasurer comes back to the city of Newport Beach, only seventeen percent. And so this is why, as we talk, and we'll continue to talk today, about our public investment in our city and our private investment in our city is absolutely critical to sustain our solid financial foundation, because the increasing assessed values means that our properties continue to become more valuable because we've invested in them, our public properties, as well as your own home and other private property. So just to let everyone know how important that is, we'll be going forward here and identifying how significant it's more, it's just over fifty percent of our total general fund budget is derived from the property taxes that we all pay, the seventeen percent that comes back. So it is really, really important. So thank you for clarifying.
Thank you. So moving on to sales tax, our second-largest revenue source. Sales tax, as you know, represents fifteen percent of the general fund revenue, while the budget trend depicts a, that, you know, potentially, it peaked in two thousand and nineteen. This is indeed an anomaly as a result of remittance delays due to the state's sales tax collections. But after adjusting for the remittance delays, all indicators point to a flattening, general flattening of sales tax growth, rather than a decline, as the chart might suggest. But another important revenue source for the city.
Dan, can I just ask a quick question? I didn't prepare you for this. I've heard from other elected representatives and city councils in Orange County that the Board of Equalization is still trying to sort out how sales tax revenues are distributed.
Correct.
Is that going to be?
That's the anomaly that I'm, I'm speaking to. So we had some delayed remittances, both in two thousand and eighteen, and we're seeing a little bit of a spike in two thousand and nineteen, and that's why it looks like we're trailing back down. If you adjust for those anomalies, the two thousand and twenty projection is roughly flat.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry, one other question. When you're looking at eighteen, are we talking fiscal year eighteen, where it's June thirty, twenty, I'm sorry, July one, twenty seventeen through June thirty, twenty eighteen?
Correct. So those, those year ends, those numbers reflect the June thirty year-end number. Okay. So moving on to transient occupancy tax, the hoteliers remain very, help if I advance the slide. The hoteliers remain very optimistic, and since we have more inventory coming back online during two thousand and eighteen and nineteen, so we had several hotels that were under remodel, and we have the new Lido House Hotel, we're expecting a little bit of a bounce-back in two thousand and twenty. We, so we believe a four point four percent TOTX growth rate, which our destination marketing organization, Newport Beaching Company, concurs with, with our, our projection that that is very obtainable as well. No questions this time.
Well, you might, while you have your other point about the, the added collection on short-term rentals and how we're going after that money.
Certainly. So with, with the advent of the online reservation platforms for, for hotels, it's, it's put an additional strain on staff to make sure that they're doing those short-term rentals in areas that they, that are allowable. So staff is actively, and by the way, those online platforms have not been particularly cooperative with the city in either making sure that they're only taking listings in those areas or even sharing that information with the city. So while that is a goal of ours, to work more cooperatively with them, right now, we are, we are essentially trolling the web, looking for those, those folks that are either renting illegally. And in, in, in either case, whether they're renting illegally or legally, we're making sure that they're, we've got additional enforcement efforts to make sure that they're actually trying to level a playing field and making sure that they're paying the appropriate amount of TOT tax as well.
Thank you.
So this is just a summary of the trends we already talked about on the various slides. I will say that the percent increases for nineteen twenty are a bit understated due to some of those anomalies. You see that both in the sales tax trend and the other revenues. Other revenues often include grants and donations that we don't always budget for. We're not presumptive that those organizations are gonna step forward, so they're usually not included in the budget estimate. But I would expect overall at least a three percent growth across all general fund revenues, rather than the one point eight. Now, all that's good news. We do still have some funding challenges ahead. Not, not all of them are weighted equally on, on this list. The unfunded pension obligation, we've been attacking for several years, and we're essentially maintaining the course. We have a little bit of speed bump on, on workers' compensation that we'll talk about in another slide, but it, it's not nearly as weighty as the other two. Funding the city's infrastructure, Dave will talk about, quite a bit about. We are an older, aging city, and there, there is infrastructure that, that it, you know, will either be newly proposed or rehabilitating that we'll be talking about on further slides. Did I get the right one? Okay, so as I said, we're, we're maintaining the course, but there's still, you know, we're still at risk for market volatility, and I'll talk about that a little bit more, but it is, our, both our costs and our funding status are highly sensitive to, to earnings in the equity markets, and as you know, they tend to be quite volatile, especially this year. As of December, all major indices were down for the year, which doesn't bode well for this year's investment returns. Additionally, there's a risk mitigation, risk mitigation effort at PERS where they may further reduce the, the assumed earnings rate from seven percent to six percent. They're in effect, the board has yet to commit to those, but all indicators, if we do get investment, higher investment returns in the future, they may go down, down that direction. So we need to be cognizant of that. We will continue to monitor the probability and the impact of earning less than seven percent and build that into the budget, just as we built in some of the discount rate changes that we did early on. So that's basically our theme, is to address these problems early and often.
I was just, Mayor Protem and I, as you're talking, and those are all correct numbers, just to be sure that residents understand that when the market doesn't perform, the city general fund has to make up the difference.
That is, that is correct.
There's no free lunch.
So, yeah, so in a defined benefit program, we promise a benefit, and the, the city is the lover in which to make up those differences when we, when the markets don't perform as expected.
And even if the CalPERS board makes unwise investment decisions, cities have to make up the shortfall as well.
That is true. So in the, we wanted to show a little bit of trend on how things are changing. So as, as we've had the opportunity to reduce benefits through a, a second lower tier, as well as the state mandate, did public, Public Employers Pension Reform Act, we are seeing a trend in, in our employees. Currently, in this, in the two thousand and seventeen vow, which is our most recent vow from PERS, we're seeing that there are about a hundred and thirty-eight Pepper employees at conversion rate, averages about thirty new Pepper employees a year. Tier two, we're seeing, it's a little harder sell for, for employees that are already a classic member at another city to come over. We're only seeing about ten employees come over a year in, in that category. So Pepper are in the green, and the tier two are in, in the red. Okay? So one of the things that we've mentioned is that, you know, we have an aggressive plan, and it is proving for, it, it is making progress. The projections from CalPERS are showing that, that the funding status is improving, but that assumes a seven percent return. To the extent that we don't earn a seven percent return, two things are gonna happen. Our funding status may not follow this pattern, and it will, it would increase the, the pension cost because, as, as the mayor indicated, if the investment returns aren't there, then, then the city picks up the difference. So, and that is true even if a plan is fully funded. So if we were fully funded, we would have nearly a billion dollars with CalPERS, and therefore, you know, it's counterintuitive, but the better funder that you are, the more at risk you are to volatility in the equities market. So our funding status is highly sensitive to investment performance.
Two quick things. One of them is, there is an asterisk, which is a little tough to say, see, but under the CalPERS projection, it says, assuming seven percent return and no ADPs. ADPs is discretionary.
Additional discretionary payment.
And so the city is making additional discretionary payments. We have for the last few years. I assume that we will continue to do so. So the, the goal is to make sure that we're meeting our requirements and actually exceeding them to pay them down faster to save on the interest. And one other quick note is the, on the investment performance, we just, we don't have any control over that. And so what ends up happening? And so what ends up happening actually when we're looking at the 2017 valuation, the reason that we're looking at 2017 instead of 2018, well, 18 just ended, but we won't know exactly what that looks like because we get billed on a two-year cycle by CalPERS, and so we get billed at the end of a year. So for example, at the end of 2018, we received our bill for 2016. CalPERS doesn't send us the bill until 2018, but they charge us interest all the way going back to 2016. And so fortunately for us, our city staff and council has essentially adopted a policy that we've been going through on the budget where we pick that up, make sure that we're paying early so that we're not getting hit with that interest. I will tell you right now, very few other cities in the state of California actually do that, so they all get hit with the interest when they get their bill.
Thank you. So this is an important slide, it's a lot of numbers, so bear with me, but the main gist is while many other cities are still facing steep increases to the investment losses that were incurred both in the Great Recession and through the lower discount rate changes that were deployed over a three-year period, we've already factored those into our budget. So while normal cost is one component, and that's increasing 6.9%, reflecting the lower expected investment returns, what most cities are seeing are very large increase on the, what I call the amortization of the unfunded liability, paying back the amount of shortfalls. You can see the proposed increase there is only 1%. In addition, employees are actually paying more towards their pension. So overall, the net employer cost increase for pension is only 2.3%. That is not what cities are seeing, and that's because of the advanced planning that Mayor Potem Will O'Neill mentioned. We factored those into previous budgets, so we're already moving up to that level.
And let me just add, a line item about expected employee contributions, let me just comment on that for a moment. We are very pleased and appreciative that our employees contribute, ranging from 12 to 13, 14% of their annual salary. This is very unique in California and certainly in Orange County. Cities are now starting to do this and starting at a very low 2, 3, 4%. Our city started this about five or six years ago to, in our negotiations with our employee associations, to factor that into their, into the negotiations and into their compensation. So we are very fortunate that our employees are contributing, and they see it every paycheck, every pay period, and we would be having to find $10 million more if they didn't. So we are grateful for that. So thank you. Thank you, employees. Thank you, staff.
So I mentioned a little bit about workers' comp funding, and we can get into the weeds about the increase in severity in claims, but I think the end point, what we've talked in detail with Finance Committee, is that we want to increase department charges about $900,000 a year and a one-time cash infusion of $3 million that will get us to where we need to be. But that's really all I really want to talk about in terms of workers' comp funding at this point.
If we didn't have a surplus, where would we find that money? What would we do?
Well, yes, general fund would slowly ratchet up department charges over time.
And it has to come from the general fund.
Yes, that's correct. So infrastructure funding needs.
I'll just briefly speak to this. A big area for us always is to make sure we have funding for our, maintaining our vast and extensive infrastructure here. We are an older city, a full-service city with, you know, land on land and water, and as such, we have a lot to take care of and manage. And as a community involves, there's also new infrastructure that may need to come on board as needs change, and we'll certainly be reviewing several proposals through Public Works Director Dave Webb. But as part of that, whenever we do this, we have to think about where the funding sources are coming from. The city's, I think, done a great job of maintaining infrastructure and considering that as part of how we budget and manage. A lot of other cities will say, hey, we're a balanced budget, but a lot of times that's with delayed maintenance on their infrastructure. To me, that's not really balanced, and this city does not do that, and so I commend it here. But we'll continue to have extensive needs. For example, we do have a water master plan coming forth in the coming months that will be an update from the last one that will have additional needs in there. So we really have to think about where the funding from that comes from, and typically that's from our water rates, having our water rate base pay for the water infrastructure associated with it. So as you see listed here, all the funding sources we do, we do want to be creative, we do want to see where we can use outside funding sources whenever possible, but ultimately at the bottom line too, it will have to be general fund if we don't have other funding sources. And we do, as a matter of course, budget about $5 million a year from the general fund to maintain sort of the nuts and bolts CIP, and we'll continue to do that here. So that's it with this first section on the update on fiscal issues. So certainly happy to perhaps take public comment on that or.
Sure. Let's do that, that's a good idea. All right, let's just stop there and allow for public comments on this first part of the financial presentation. If you have public comments, please come forward. Mr. Mosher.
Thank you, Mayor Dixon, members of the council. My name again is Jim Mosher, and a couple of points I wanted to make. We heard at the beginning about our property valuation that we're very proud of. I think that's a good thing. You may have read in the daily pilot that there was a Planning Commission study session on Thursday, and the public heard from some public speakers, a very interesting idea, something called property value filtration. And the concept being if you, if the city encourages the construction of ultra-luxury development, that that somehow makes the other development in the city more affordable by comparison? And the implication was it actually depresses the other property values. So I thought that was a very strange but interesting idea, and something we, if it's true, we may want to treat with some caution, the trend towards ultra-luxury actually depressing the value of the property that we have here currently. Second comment I wanted to make is about the employee contributions towards their pensions. That is a very positive trend, but I think it has to be tempered by the thought, as I recall, when many of the contracts calling for that increased contribution were proposed, they were offset by increases in salary. So the trade-off is exactly who's paying for it is, in the future, good, but in the past, the city actually is helping towards that, even though we call it the employee part. I submitted in writing, I wanted to call your attention to a couple of fiscal, prior fiscal commitments that the city had made. One towards a plan that was part of our general plan about fiscal sustainability, and another one about, that was part of a charter amendment that we made in the past. I wanted to add to that two other comments. The city charter requires the city clerk to keep a list of all the contracts that the city makes and open to public inspection. To the city's credit, the clerk has been posting some of the recent ones, and there were two recent contracts I noticed that are currently highlighted on the city webpage. One is a $33,000 contract with Beacon Economics, who the council heard from at its last meeting. The purpose of the contract is to prepare a report about the economic impact of Newport Beach on the rest of Orange County and the state of California. I thought that was an interesting contract. I wanted to call that to your attention. And the second one is, as you know, we have a open budget portal in Newport Beach, and the revision to that contract, we are paying for the open budget part, we're also paying for something that's called the open expenditure part of that, which is to allow the public to see the checks that are being written in Newport Beach. We've been paying for that for two years, and it has not been implemented yet for the public to see. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other public comments? Please come forward.
Good morning, Dennis Baker. Since we're talking about money coming and going out, I'm here to compliment the city staff. They have been very aggressive, I think is the right word, energetic in getting grants, and I think a lot of people in the public are not aware of that, and I think the council's aware of that, but I just want to reiterate and compliment them on their past successes and hopefully future successes in bringing in grant money into the city. Thank you.
That's a very good comment. Thank you for that. They are, we are, we have an exceptional staff that is exceptionally effective in securing outside grants. Thank you for reminding us all. Any other public comments? All right, let's proceed with service-level considerations. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Beak.
I'd like to ask a question. I got lost at the very beginning, which is a bad place to get lost, but on the general fund, there seem to be four categories it was broken into, and they all look like the same thing. This is money you've got, but you can't spend it, and I would appreciate if somebody would explain, unless it's explained in the handout, the difference between those different categories of, I can't remember all their names now, but they all sound the same. Nonspendable, restricted, committed, assigned, what's the difference between all those things?
Does the council want me to address that here?
Can I give a, just real, one quick overview? So it's a really good, fair question. Generally speaking, quick reminder, when we're talking about our, the way we have our funds in the city, we basically have three different funds. We have the general fund, which can be spent on anything legal. We have restricted funds, which are legally restricted to a certain usage. And then we have enterprise funds. Enterprise funds are typically your utilities, so the amount that we pay in for our water rate as a consumer needs to essentially be the same, as close as we can get for the infrastructure improvements as well as the purchase of the water itself. Those are the general, those are the different, those are the three different funds. What Alan's talking about is the, he's referencing the general fund reserves, and one quick thing, when he started, I thought he was referencing what goes into the general fund. Generally speaking, for our general fund, the revenues are property tax, sales tax, transient occupancy tax, that makes up about 70, 75% of it, and the remaining is other revenue. The other revenue, you can always look into our budget, it's about five or six pages long with very small print. There's a lot of, there's a lot of other revenue that goes into it, so I won't get into that. But what he's referencing is, are the general fund reserves. We do have a variety of reserves. I'm going to kick this one over to Dan.
Okay, so very quickly, with, in governmental accounting, that there is a strong focus on how restricted, if any, are the resources that you have in the general fund. So starting from the top is the most restrictive. So if it's nonspendable, that means it's an item like inventory or a long-term receivable that while is part of your fund balance, is not available to fund current operations. And so we have a fairly large number, which is a long-term loan from the Tydland Fund, and as we receive the repayments, then it becomes unrestricted. Restricted is restricted from an external source. That might be affordable housing in lieu, but it's restricted by an external entity. If it's committed, that means it's a council commitment that can be undone by this council. And what you see, that 13.4 million is largely the prior year surplus that you see of 12.5 million being reallocated in this year's budget towards other items. The remaining difference between that 13.4 and the 12.5 are encumbered projects, projects that we started during the last year that are encumbered and are carried forward, so they're committed. The assignments are usually just a timing difference. But does that answer your question, Mr. Beak?
Please come forward if you.
I'm hard of hearing, so I won't explain, I won't say understood at all, but thanks.
Well, and let me just, let me just add to that, just so everyone knows, we all manage cash flows. These are really cash flows that come into the city, and as Dan has said, that there are certain rules and regulations of how that cash flow is kept and reserved for a certain legal function. So that's really what it is. So, thank you. All right, so let's begin on service-level considerations.
Yes, okay. Managing service level and service-level considerations. I'm very interested in getting guidance and feedback here, particularly from council and the community. We are developing the recommended budget right now, and I am seeing requests come in from departments and starting to analyze them. And I will say, a consistent area of concern that I've heard, even in my short time here, is our level of enforcement across several areas. So want to talk about that a little bit in some areas to look into potentially adding additional resources. So I'll have various directors come up and speak briefly in those areas. I would also note, we won't talk into it at this point, but there's also additional enforcement that is required as we have additional mandates and programs that come in, in particular around recycling, there are state recycling mandates coming into place and compliance that is necessary for that. So that's certainly going to require resources and education and outreach there, and it's a very complex topic with a lot to go on there, more to come, so I just wanted to just set that stage at this point. Another area is increased maintenance around our public facilities, particularly sidewalk, pressure washing, restroom cleaning services and service levels there, so we'll have Dave Webb talk briefly on that. And then finally, I don't want to go into detail on the specifics, but I think there's another area that I'd like to have a brief discussion, we start that off, is how we deliver services. We really, with employee costs being a little better maintained, particularly with the Pepper folks on board, and costs of contract services as particularly in specialized areas, I think from a fiscal area, it's something to look further into, whether in some areas it makes sense to bring in a full-time employee versus maintaining contract services, and also in part-time versus full-time. So I'll just touch on that a little briefly, and would love to continue having that conversation and some input there. So I'm going to start over with the enforcement side and some of the areas enforcement that we're seeing potential areas to enhance, and I will start with Chief Lewis to talk about on the traffic safety side.
Good morning, John Lewis, you're chief of police, and I'm going to talk a little bit about, right up to the mic, okay. Apologize for that. So we have a slide here to reflect our traffic safety enhancement for purposes of discussion here. So we currently have staffed eight FTEs, which are eight motor officer equivalents, and their primary mission is traffic safety. And to give you an idea of our performance metrics here, we looked at our 2018 numbers where we have 5,700 citations written by this group and about 1,800 traffic collisions. So it's, you know, it's about between eight and 10 citations a day and about a crash and a half that each one of these officers handles. Historically, this was a unit where we had staffed up to 12 at one point in the mid-2000s, and with restructuring of budgets and things being what they were, we allocated resources to different areas of the department. We are now at an eight FTE in this area, and we're proposing here, for sake of discussion, is what it would look like with going from eight to 10 with our motor officers units here. So we're talking about a 25% increase here in traffic safety enforcement, and some of the things that our motors do in addition to just simply writing tickets, our school safety efforts, we spend a lot of time, particularly in the Newport Heights area, over recent years, and with some of the infrastructure improvements there, to support those efforts with enforcement. So that's been a big emphasis for us as well. Our hotspot patrols, as you know, we're highly invested in data-driven policing, and our motors support that function. So when you're looking at hotspot patrols, and we have areas where there's additional crime trends or problems, and visibility may be one of those things that we need in order to combat that effort. What we do is we overlay our traffic function with our crime-fighting function, and we find a lot of times that our intersections or areas where we have traffic problems correlate to where we're having crime problems in a certain area as well. So there's a value add here with our traffic officers as well. So while they are focused on traffic safety, we also get a crime-fighting value add with this as well. So our quality-of-life concerns, and really, I can tell you from all the community meetings that we go to, there's never one that we don't go to where we hear quality-of-life traffic issues. So it's, we can talk sometimes about a neighborhood and really doing well in terms of what our crime numbers are, but we also receive the voices that are concerned about traffic, and it's the quality-of-life type of stop sign violations, things like that that we all hear. So this is something that we can also impact as well with the proposed additional resources here. that we can also impact as well with, with the proposed additional resources here. So, one thing I do want to mention as well is all of our special events in town, this is a traffic safety function. This is a unit that facilitates traffic in and out of town, and we've had some big ones, and they're continuing to grow. The boat parade, obviously, big success this year. That's something that our traffic safety folks are heavily involved in, but also the big races and things we have in town, Race for the Cure being one of them. We're seeing significant increases in participation in, in these events, which is a good thing, but it's also something that impacts our, our traffic safety resources as well.
May I just make a comment? Thank you, chief. A couple of things, I don't know if you have it at the ready there, but when you talk, you are, the FTEs are down since two thousand eight. I think that reduction is when the cutbacks occurred. So, I wonder, we talk, I talk a lot about the annual visitors to Newport Beach that are coming to our beaches and our beach communities, beach part of our community, and that's ten to eleven million visitors a year. And I'm just curious, off the top of my head, what was the number of visitors that we estimated that came during that period of time? The point I'm making is that there are impacts that come from external sources in our city, from increased development that's occurred east of us, as well as just traffic that comes to our beaches. And I think we're all experiencing the effects of impacts of the need, in my opinion, for the greater enforcement, because there's just an awful lot of people that enjoy coming to Newport Beach, and there are impacts. So, thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Yeah, I've got a question. So, chief, when we're talking about the data-driven, this
proposal would be to actually add two full-time employees to the police department. It's not a transition from one area over into it, it would be actually adding two more, two more police officers?
Or police officer positions.
Okay. And then, when we're looking at last year, one of the things that came out was that the crime stats were trending downward. Have we seen an increase in traffic collisions? And I guess, it would be, I'm trying to wrap my head around the idea of adding more police officers when we're seeing crime actually going down. So, I'm trying to understand the, because police officers are incredibly valuable, and they're also very expensive for, for a budget, because we have the law, both the current and then the long-term impact of safety pension system. So, when we're looking at the, when we're looking at this, trying to make a decision, what are we seeing for the justification, other than there are more people coming into the city?
That's a fair question. And when we talk about traffic safety, it's, it's measured differently than what our, what our crime numbers are now. They also have the ability to, to impact our crime numbers, which again, as I mentioned, is a value add. But I'll just give you an idea about what our traffic safety picture looks like, and it's relatively been the same over the years. We receive funding from the Office of Traffic Safety, where we do enforcement, and part of that justification is our percentile ranking in terms of injury collisions, alcohol-involved collisions, and bicycle-involved collisions. So, OTS ranks us in a percentile. We are in the top sixty-six percent of similar-sized California cities, so that means that we're in the top third of cities our size in the area of nighttime injury collisions, alcohol-involved collisions, and bicycle-involved collisions. And then we're also in the top half of motorcycle injury collisions. So, these are numbers that aren't reflected in our, in our crime numbers, but they're also important for us to understand in terms of our traffic safety enforcement picture. So, thank you for the question, sir.
Any other questions?
In Newport Heights, my district, it's, this is what people are really asking for. And I know you very well the whole situation, but could you just tell me, we've got eight motor officers, and when school starts on those weekday mornings, how pressurized are they? Where are they in the city? And I know, because this is the issue, I think, there's just, we're, we all know there's just, the city's so large, and there's so many areas to cover. So, if you could just kind of give a background on what's going on at that time of the day?
Sure, I can. When you, when you think about school, and I have school-aged children as well, so that time between seven forty-five and eight thirty is, is impacted in our schools, and, and what we've seen in Newport Heights and Newport Harbor High School is also, it's, it's tight. There are a lot of folks in there. But we also have a significant traffic volume from commuters on the highway and other areas in the city. So, this is a peak traffic time. And also, those, those eight motors too, we're talking about, not only are we dealing with these commuting issues in the schools, but we also have to cover the weekends too, is where the mayor mentioned too, about that's when our visitor volume is as well. So, it's, it's a unit where we have to take that number, and we have to spread it out across the week. And we look at how we do that with our, with our staffing to make sure that we're staffed up in the appropriate areas. And so, what we do also with, particularly as it relates to the school, that's been something that we've had our school resource officers also help us with, but they do need the support of our, of our traffic team. And we just, last week, had done some enforcement efforts, particularly targeting the Newport Heights area. And part of what we're doing here too, is we have the, the citation volume that I pointed to, but we also feel it's important to catch people doing things right as well, as opposed to just issuing citations as a way to, to increase compliance here. We also have our educational efforts that this team is embedded in our schools now, where we actually have instructional minutes that are dedicated to our, to our team, talking about traffic safety in our schools. But we also make a lot of positive contacts with our kids too, where we reward them for riding appropriately, having their helmets, and things like that as well.
Mr. Hurdman.
Chief, I know in the mayor's district and my district, code enforcement is a huge issue. What will the hiring of two additional police officers do to that? What effect will it have on code enforcement?
In terms of the motor officers here, it depends on the type of code enforcement. Now, typically, in, in the mayor's district in years, we see some of the code enforcement as it relates to our alcohol license establishments, and that's something that our, our motor officers can help with, but it wouldn't be their primary mission when it comes to those types of, those types of issues here. And it really depends on, our, our motors are focused on the California Vehicle Code and traffic safety as it relates to that, rather than the code function. So, depending on the area, they can help, but it wouldn't be their primary.
So, the focus here is really to get better control on traffic enforcement, correct? Okay.
Any other questions up here? Yes, Mr. Muldoon.
Grace, when would you like us to give opinions on different matters brought before us, as they come or at the end?
I think what works best, I mean, I think maybe as we go along, because there'll be different topic areas.
So, we decided to do a joint resource officer with the schools recently, which I supported. And if crime has an uptick, I'm specifically concerned about residential burglaries and campus safety. I would vote for something like this, but I won't support more traffic officers this time. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the, the next area, which is looking at parking enforcement as well as code enforcement.
Do you want to hear from us as far as whether we support this or not at this point in time? Because I certainly do. I would certainly support the hiring of additional traffic officers.
We will have other, I mean, as we go forward in the budget, this will be debated, all of these issues will be, come forward. This is really just to probably give a nod, pro or con, whether you generally support it. We obviously haven't gone through the rigorous analysis we typically do, particularly to add headcount, just qualitative point of view, what you're looking for now.
Yeah, if there's some strong feedbacks, you know, certainly that's helpful now, but you're right, there'll be continued times to, to discuss through this as well. And I know this is the first time we're presenting this as a, as a potential, so.
Thank you. Good morning. I'm Simone Jurgis. I'm your community development director. So, now I'm going to talk about more about parking enforcement, where the chief was focusing more on the traffic enforcement side. About less than a year ago, council directed staff to look at how to curb, curtail the parking impacts due to all the residential construction. So, this past year, we've actually been speaking to the community, and one thing we did hear about was the lack of, lack of parking enforcement. So, what, what staff decided to do was go out and actually do a pilot program. You know, what if we increased parking enforcement? Currently, we have a contract with Ameripark, and Ameripark monitors and cites all the needed parking. So, we asked Ameripark to go out and actually look at just residential street parking, and what are those results? So, we can explain kind of the data back to the city council. And you can see there, we've, Ameripark issued about five hundred and twenty-nine parking citations, but what's an important takeaway of this is that majority of those citations were on our residents, and, and only a quarter of them were issued on the, the general contractors. So, from a staff standpoint, in about a couple, about the end of this month, we're going to come back to the city council and talk about some, some potential code changes to address these parking impacts due to the construction. One of the subject matters we want to talk about later on this month is enforcement. And our idea is, is a potential idea here, is that, is increasing Ameripark's service from nine full-time to fourteen full-time only for, only for that peak season during, throughout the year. And that's when our students are out of the schools, that's when we have a lot more visitors, and parking is becoming very competitive. The residential parking is becoming very competitive. So, an option, we're going to suggest to the council here in a few weeks, is, is the council interested in increasing those, that parking enforcement to address those issues that we have with residential construction? From a cost-benefit analysis, we believe that the citation revenue will offset the cost of the additional enforcement of five additional full-time plus two additional part-timers. This is strictly for contract, yeah, contract employees, again, through Ameripark.
Now, are we going after the residents as we go forward with enhanced, are we still, you're going to be talking in the future about the construction issues that we have?
That's correct, Mayor Dixon. Is that, in a, in a few weeks here, by the end of the month, we'll come back to city council to talk about all the, the construction issues as it relates to parking, and how we're going to curtail some of that construction issues. But again, one of the subjects is part of that is enforcement, and this is one of the ideas that we have.
So, five people? They really need five full-time people?
Through the pilot program, we, that's what, that's what the result was through the pilot program, is that, you know, we need to cover all these residential areas, Babo Island, Lido Island, the peninsula, Coron del Mar, and it took, it took quite a bit of effort to do that.
I need to know more about that. Ms. Brenner?
Yes, I'd like to make a comment. I'm concerned about our increased enforcement if our residents are forced to park illegally because construction traffic is parking in the places that they would normally occupy. I think we really need to look at analyzing this to a great deal to figure out where the problem is, because, you know, we want our citizens to be able to park near their homes when they're unloading groceries and that sort of thing. So, it's not just a matter of enforcement if we're ticketing seventy-five percent of our, of our residents, and there are spaces that are occupied by construction traffic. So, it's a bigger issue than just enforcement.
Good point.
Any other comments up here?
So, the, the next subject I want to talk about is code enforcement. We know, what do we see for code enforcement going forward? And the council has expressed, and some of the community expressed, more enforcement. As, as last year, when we formed the harbor department, we've moved our code enforcement supervisor, Matt Cozyline, over to the harbor department to assist in forming that code enforcement team. And Matt's been doing a phenomenal job, and our suggestion is to go ahead and leave Matt over there in the harbor department, because he's done such a great job, and that, that role has not finished yet. From, from the code enforcement at City Hall, their team, we still have that vacant position that we've moved, because Matt's moved over. We'd like to go ahead and create a position in the harbor department for Matt, but at the same time, backfill that vacant supervisory position here on the city hall side. At the same time, we have a code enforcement trainee that's operating at a point seven five, and we'd like to boost that up just to a one point oh. So, you know, what does that mean as far as caseload goes? Well, if we fill the supervisory position and increase from point seven five to one point oh for the trainee, we're looking at about an additional thousand cases, and these are proactive cases that the enforcement officers would go out and find. So, that, that's going to be our suggestion to the council, and love to hear your feedback on, on this idea.
So, Simone, I want to make sure I'm, I'm understanding the, the, so, the city has long, long, long been a reactive code enforcement city, not a proactive code enforcement city. So, what you're suggesting would be a pretty dramatic shift, actually, where instead of having people come in, call in and, and report concerns, we'd actually be going out and trying to find more in our city?
That is correct, Mayor Protem.
So, are we seeing, let me, let me back up then and ask a different question. So, assume for a moment that we're actually, we wanted to stay on as a reactive approach. Are we seeing a backlog of cases with Matt over in harbor department? So, are we, what, what kind of backlog are we seeing in terms of calls in, open cases that haven't been closed?
We, we don't have a backlog. We're doing really good. Our turnaround times, you know, within three days is ninety-two percent, you know, so we have a very efficient team. So, the less staff you have, the less you see when you drive around. So, we are a reactive program. This model that we've proposed today is truly a proactive program. We don't have a very big backlog. Maybe we have about sixty-eight open cases that they're constantly working on, just because they can't, it's hard to get compliance. But I can't say we have a, we have a backlog at all.
Okay, so, then what's driving to add? It's really because Matt is moving over to the harbor and to replace. So, I remember when, with our harbor budget forecasting discussions several months ago, the council expressed a desire to hold headcount and costs flat for three years. So, this would be the first, I see Ms. Jacob sitting here as she can explain, but I know we fell very strongly to just hold the line on harbor costs, and Matt was going over there on a, I mean, a significant workload to bring that up to speed and to resolve those outstanding cases, which he is doing effectively. So, once we've settled all that backlog, can we not even out those responsibilities between the harbor and the rest of the city?
We can, absolutely. Again, this is just from hearing that there's a need for a little bit more enforcement. This is kind of our proposal for enforcement. If the council decides that maybe this is too aggressive at this time, we're, we're fine as it is and just maintaining the course as what we have currently.
You know, reactive as, as opposed to a proactive type of approach to code enforcement though, right?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Because, you know, if we began to hear from residents, we do hear a lot from residents for code, requesting code enforcement, if we began to hear that staff is not responding, that that would be concerning. I don't hear that. I hear the opposite, that staff is very responsive, just as your numbers indicate.
I would agree with you, Mayor.
Yeah. Ms. Jacob, did you just want to comment on harbor costs?
Absolutely. So, beginning in July first, two thousand nineteen, will be the beginning of our, our second year of code enforcement. Matt, our code enforcement supervisor, went out there on a part-time basis in July of seventeen, kind of halfway through the year. And we started doing actually proactive enforcement, because there were a lot of code enforcement needs in the harbor that we needed to address. Simone's office was nice enough to give us Matt full-time beginning July first of this year. Matt has done an amazing job out there. He's opened seven hundred and forty cases and closed four hundred and ninety. I think our concern at the harbor is that with this new department, if Matt goes away, and it was a loan, and we understood that it was a loan, that that, that code enforcement goes, goes away too. We do not have anybody on staff that is capable of doing the kind of code enforcement activity that is required in the harbor. When you are trying to revoke a mooring, it is an immensely technical and time-consuming process, and with one full-time director and several part-time employees, this is not going to be able to happen. So, I think this is really a policy decision for this council as to what kinds of activities you want us doing in the harbor, what kinds of things you want us to do. We have had most of the staff trained to issue citations, so I, I would see us continuing to issue time limits on, on public docks and those kinds of things. But as far as the large, big, Mr. Avery will know, wild wave kind of issues that we have out there, we just, we just will not be able to do it, because we don't have the expertise.
Mr. Hurdman, did you want to say? Mayor Protem, I would like to just request that you and the finance committee, we look at this as we go into budget, to do the, kind of the first year in review of the harbor department and what the needs are and how it's doing, and, and how it intersects with the rest of the city, specifically on this issue.
Happy to. Yeah, I would just note real briefly, I know that we're going through a Title XVII revision discussion at the harbor department, which, Paul, are you working on that one? Okay. So, I'm guessing that we'll probably see that coming this year, hopefully, and maybe early next year. And so, we know that there are going to be a bunch of policy decisions being made, and a pretty, and there will be new codes to be enforced, and certainly I expect the marine activities permit to, structure to be revised. And so, when we're going through all of that, I think we do need to have an experienced hand over at code enforcement, particularly helping along also with some of the policy decisions. But, yeah, we're more than happy to, Dan, we added something to the finance committee, so we're going to be, we're going to be reviewing the harbor department, and you're sitting next to our harbor master. Get ready. Thanks.
Mayor, any comment?
Yes, go ahead.
Just by way of background, the harbor for the last twenty to thirty years has operated with virtually zero code with virtually zero code enforcement, and, and it has been complaint-based, which has not been enough. And we have 1,200 residents on the harbor, and when they hear excessive noise from personal pleasure craft or charter boats, they tend not to report it because they're enjoying, you know, if you're in your home enjoying everything and the boat is going by with all the noise, to get up and make that call, you, you know, it's sort of is a little disruptive to your day, and in the past, they didn't know quite where to call. It was difficult to figure out that you would go to the Orange County Sheriff's, and even looking up that number was difficult. And our, many of our employees, several of our employees involved with the harbor were not on duty in the, on the weekends. So, the harbor is basically running without code enforcement at all for a very, very long time. And what has happened during that time is the, the harbor usage has dramatically increased, particularly with all the charter boats and the rentals of Duffy's and stand-up paddleboards and all the rest of it. So, there's lots going on out there. And as a city, we obviously want to have the charter boats, we want to have everybody enjoying the harbor, it's just not for us. It's a public asset that everybody from wherever they're from can come down and enjoy in the method they'd like, but the harbor has gotten much busier, much more crowded. There's many more small businesses operating on the harbor, many of them without marine activities permits even today, and there's this issue of keeping speeds down. So, the whole thing has gotten to a point where I believe full-time code enforcement is, is really needed, and that's not so much going after people as it is educating and negotiating and just trying to get everybody to play nice. What we have out there is a park, a water park, but it's surrounded by residents, and that's the difference between us and many, many harbors. And we owe it to the residents, they're, they have a right to the quiet, peaceful enjoyment of their homes, and we have some people come to town and they don't quite understand that. They need to be educated. So, it's, I think it's, it's very important, and it's a key part, in my view, of the new Harbor Department, and it's very much needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments up here? Pardon me? Yes, they are. So, thank you, Ms. Jacob. Oh, I'm sorry, Kevin, Mr. Muldoon?
I definitely support keeping things reactionary, and I think that we could get in a place where we become hall monitors, not problem solvers. So, that's my thought, and that'll, it's going to come back, though, and it sounds like the votes are there for, for more code, but I would keep it as is.
All right, well, thank you. Continuing on.
Yes, continuing on, I'm going to turn it over to Dave Webb for...
Yes, good morning, Council. Dave Webb, your Public Works Director. I'm going to talk to you about, today about a couple issues that have kind of been trending upward and probably need some guidance, and this is in the service level area. I did want to take this opportunity, particularly for the general public, to introduce the gentleman, Micah Martin, is our new Deputy Public Works Director over at Municipal Operations Department. He's right back here and responsible for a lot of these services and may need to give you some information on this, but I'll, I'll lead off the conversation. Our first one here we want to talk about is sidewalk and public plaza pressure washing, cleanliness of the city. And this graphic here is, is really to kind of introduce you to the, the topic and where the money is being spent in the city. And if you look closely here, you can see we're spending about $229,000 a year on just basically pressure washing, cleaning up spills, cleaning up grease, other things that come on our sidewalks and our plaza here. And this, this trend has been growing, and this graph kind of shows you where that's at and how we're spending that. This next piece right here is...
It's coming from the 11 million people that come here.
Yes, this is, this is a high-level need, this is a frontline service, because we have a lot of visitors and we have a lot of traffic, and it's, it's something we want to pay attention to because it does show how we represent ourselves to the city, folks that come see us. So, important, important service here, and what we're going to get into probably is where you feel we are in this. This graph here kind of tells you where we're spending that money, and it's very, very, Bauboa Village, the piers, Coron del Mar, some areas, certain bridges, we're now in Bauboa Island, and we have been trending upward on this. I put a little graph on the side of the fiscal years and our expenses there, and you see back in '16, we were about 210,000. We're now running just about 282,000 this year, we project when we get done with it, and it has been trending upward, and part of that's been we've increasing service. Last year, we added Bauboa Island, we started doing quarterly cleaning of the boardwalk that hadn't been done before. We've added some bridge cleaning, particularly because we had a lot of jumping concerns this year, so we're on the Lido Avenue Bridge that we hadn't been in the past. And we also have calls from the community for additional cleaning, and it's done in different ways. Some areas, for instance, when you go down to the Newport area, McFadden Plaza, we keep that plaza extensive clean, touch it twice a week, but we also have areas where the merchants along the frontage there by the stag bar in that area, take it upon themselves to clean their frontage. It's a mixed bag out there. We do spot cleaning in some areas, like Coron del Mar, we clean the bus shelters and some of the benches and trash cans, but we don't necessarily clean the sidewalks like we do in other areas. Marine Avenue, we clean the sidewalks, we clean those areas. So, it's different levels of service. Want to introduce this topic. I know I've heard from some of the community they'd like to have more of this, and we want to see council's thoughts on should we be increasing this or decreasing this or holding the line on, on our amount of cleaning.
Dave, could you clarify for me, when is it the property owner's responsibility to clean, business, commercial business, to clean their sidewalks? Do we impose that requirement?
I don't know if it's a strict requirement. Typically, the property owner is required for his frontage, if you look at the municipal code, and again, it's been applied differently in some cases, like the plazas, there, the frontages for, say, some of the areas right by the pier are heavily used by the public, and it's really not a property owner cause. Other areas, for instance, I know there's some ice cream shops and others that you see the tracking out of their stores, it's directly related to the restaurant or the, the activity they're running, and maybe that's more the responsibility. It's been applied differently, we're really just trying to keep the cleanliness of the city and the major tourist areas up.
Questions from the dice? Any comments? Well, since much of my district, Mr. Hurdman's district, relates to the visitor, I mean, this is probably a consistent comment that business owners have said. When I push back and say, "Well, are you going to clean the sidewalk in front of your business?", they say they do, and it's still, I mean, we just, it is a problem. It really comes down to what type of city we want to be. We want to be welcoming to those 11 million visitors, and there's a lot of benefit to 11, I don't mean to suggest that there's not a benefit, certainly from a sales tax, TOT, there's a benefit to our, to those visitors, but there are impacts. But, on the other hand, I've always felt that Newport maintains a high standard in terms of keeping the city clean, and I hope we continue to do that. I don't know if we could achieve the cleanliness goals of Disneyland, but, I mean, we are proud of our city, and we want the sidewalks to look good and the trash to be picked up, and the public restrooms, I know you'll get into that in a moment, to be maintained. We're just dealing with a lot of people. If we were simply a city with 85,000 people, we would not be, need to be doing what you're suggesting here in terms of cleaning all the sidewalks. We just have a lot of people in our community that we want, are, are trying to keep it clean for.
And I appreciate that input, and with that, knowing that we'll have to be working with our community, we, we do try to address that. This is a contracted service, we use contracted folks come in the city. We do spot clean where we can, but we can't always address everything, and some people want us to be there daily, weekly, we get these requests. We, we will keep on what we're doing if that's your desire to keep at this level. I think we'll have a little budget increase, not service level, but our service levels, you can see, has been climbing, and our budget hasn't been adjusted upward. So, this year, you might see requests to kind of catch up to where we at, but, but then to hold that kind of cleaning level is what I'm hearing from the council.
And be responsive as you always are.
We'll keep on that.
I mean, I, I mean, I can only speak for myself, but I, I think these service levels have been the consistent budget levels with a few modifications for 10 years, and I don't know if that's realistic, given the value that those visitors do have to our community in bringing in sales tax and TOT and restaurant sales tax. I mean, we want our city to be an attractive destination, and we need to recognize we've been cutting back on services for the last 10 years.
I think we kind of get the feel of the council on this one, then.
We could talk about this later, but I, we need to do a deep dive on this. I mean, it's like the broken window theory in, in the police work, I mean, when you don't keep your community up, then other people who visit our city don't respect it the way we do. So, there's a benefit to that. Does anyone else want to? I feel bad that I, badly, I can't see on a screen who wants to speak, so, speak up if, or if you, hold your thoughts, or speak now or forever hold your thoughts. Go ahead.
Support holding the line, but if you can make an adjustment for inflation, I would understand that. People who want to come wash daily, I mean, that's silly.
Okay.
Just, this is a public opportunity to thank you, Dave, and your department for all the work that you do, and for keeping our city looking as fantastic as it, as it does and is. So, I would not recommend any cutback at all in your efforts.
I think Michael, being secure with that.
I would go that.
But thank you for that, that's actually Mike, this team that does it, there's a lot of unsung heroes. I could talk to you about the tide valves that were being operated this morning by Mark's crews early in the rain, but we'll go on to restrooms.
Okay.
So, here's another area of service.
Sorry, just a moment, I need to note a conflict on this item. My law firm represents ABM, even though I don't make money directly or indirectly, the appearance of conflict is such that I will declare a conflict.
So, from here on out, you can't talk about restrooms? Okay.
But if you need one, folks, there's one right out the door here on the side. All right, let's move into another area of, this is, I wanted to bring this to your attention because this is an ongoing issue with us, and we get a lot of complaints, and we try our best in this area. We're unique as an, as a tourist destination, beach city, and I'll start this first slide, you'll see that we have many restrooms in this city. Most of you see down towards the beach areas and our parks. This is a high level of independent facilities, like, we have 26 facilities that are sole outside, like, for this facility has its own restrooms, but standalone facilities that are used by the public. And we, we do our best to clean these, but we have a lot of need here, and we have a lot of things that come into play. So, currently, with these 26 restrooms, we have cleaning levels, and there are different levels of service on this. I'm going to call it a basic level of service, and I'll explain that in a minute. We have six high-use restrooms cleaned twice daily, and those are basically, you can imagine, Newport Pier, Baboa Pier, some of the places we have a lot of tourist folks and a lot of impact. And then the rest of our facilities, some of our outline parks, San Miguel Park, Mariners Park, are cleaned once a day. And then we augment that with a porter service that goes out and restocks paper products and, and takes the spot cleaning of it. But the issue at hand here that we were going to ask the council to consider is, the cleaning level may be substandard compared to what we might want, it could be standard, I call it a basic level. We have ongoing service complaints from our restrooms, and, and it's not untypical of this, these are very high-y's public facilities, and, and I got to say, the public doesn't always treat them with respect, so they, they take a lot of abuse. This draws on staff resources, we have to pull from our thin staff, our beach folks and other folks will stop and go take care of an issue because there's a restroom issue, and I don't know if it's properly being maintained or not, but the deal with restrooms, too, it's a janitorial service, and we're usually dealing with kind of the lower level of the service levels. This is folks that are entry and reliability sometime an issue, things like that. So, we do have complaints in this area. We have a, a need maybe more frequent cleaning in, like, a deep cleaning, there's the spot cleaning, and then there's the really deep cleaning of restrooms. We don't really do that enough probably in our restrooms. And then we have kind of an associated problem, we have a higher level transient populations we've been talking about for some time, and, and they are creating a little additional wear and tear on our facilities, and particularly in some areas, which need a little more help. So, a summary of kind of where we are on our restroom service, we do this by contract service. It used to be done by in-house staff many years ago, and we changed over to contracts. So, currently, we have ABM as our contract service, and this is no particular take on anyone company, it's just where we spend our dollars at. Our annual cost's about $252,000 for this. This contract's actually coming up this February, and then we supplement it with another contractor to basically do portering services, we call, particularly in the summer, they go out and restock it, they even do some cleanup action, their contracts a little more because they touch our restrooms a little bit more, and that contract's coming up too. But this is an area we want to bring to your attention, we have a lot of concerns here, maybe an area you want to increase service levels. So, I have a couple suggestions here. When we go out and if we want to rebid this and, and go to another contract base, maybe we combine these two contracts into one, that would be our guess, and maybe try to get a higher cleaning level. I'm not aware, and I was asking staff in the janitorial world, are there ABC contractors and services? Do we have folks that are uniformed and have, you know, the smell-good plumber type? Can you contract for that? We're researching that now, so maybe we can suggest to you a little higher-level service. The other side is maybe reevaluating this for consistency, having it brought back in staff, again. That is a consideration because of the Pepper changes as Dan went through and employee costs. We had more consistence in, consistency and reliability with in-house staff than we do with a contract staff. We have had days that contract staff just, doesn't show up, and what do we do about that? We call in overtime people, we try to address it, reliability's an issue, and that's, the company has that same problem, their employees turn over, they don't show up. So, it's an area that is very high-proy, frontline for the city, and we probably need some attention there, and I'd look for your comments or thoughts on that.
Any comments up here?
I personally would support either combining or increasing the frequency at which the bathrooms are cleaned. I don't know if we need to have a higher level as much as just more frequency, but I would not want us to bring in any staff because of concerns about pension and other costs. And I imagine that this, this is a specific to certain restroom areas, as opposed to citywide, I could be mistaken, but if that's the case, is it considered to be part of anything that we're doing with the county right now? We're dealing with homeless issue or making facilities that are user-friendly to others?
And we could look at that, to the comment about, is it dealing with, say, the county issues and probably the homeless population. Two solutions I thought in this, we've had some residents call us and say, "Will you lock those restrooms down and close them at night?" I don't know if that's the right approach or not, because the homeless are still here, and truthfully, when we've done that, we find the homeless problem right at the door of the restaurant, restroom when we come in the morning. So, denying them the access to the restroom might not be the best way. Creating a better service level for them, cleaning might be a better way. And it is, on just the beach areas too, I was going to comment, a lot of our sports parks where we get high use, those restrooms take a lot of kids and a lot of people in there, and one cleaning a day or maybe some portering is probably not enough for them too. But Anita Canyon Park comes to mind. We want to make sure we're touching those, and we're probably not at a level like a restaurant where you go in the door and there's a guy checking every hour, but we can probably surely increase that and, and reduce the complaints and give a little better service. And I can look at the contract side of that to do that.
Yes, was, was Kevin's question related to, is there funding available through the homeless funds that are available in the county for us to address this as part of our request to the county for funding?
To that, I don't know, but it surely be a just question to the county because we have a great population, as you know, and they do put a burden on our public facilities.
I, I would have to say that you know what the county's response would be, build your own facility. If they're using public bathrooms, they need a facility, that's another topic, or we'll be talking about that. That's a good discussion. I, I would like to see as we go into the budget process, a comparison if we were to do it ourselves versus contract out, if it's less expensive to do it ourselves, just to look at that.
Mayor?
Yes, please.
I'd just like to make the comment that, I think Newport Beach is all-in for visitor servicing, it's what we do, it's who we are, and I think we just have to find out a way to maintain, you know, our restrooms and our sidewalks in a, in a way that's welcoming, and I just don't think we have much of a choice in it. Obviously, the numbers are the numbers, and if we can't afford it, we can't afford it, but I have a feeling we could get to somewhere where we could afford to meet these objectives you've outlined, to ensure that the public and the residents, our guests, have clean facilities in our city. It's just, I think it's just the bottom of the pyramid. Thank you.
And I support that comment. I mean, the visitors who come are, are spending money in our city, and, and if we have dirty sidewalks and restrooms, they have other choices. I was going to say something when Mr. Avery was speaking, oh, when you do your analysis or your contract renewal, if ABM is up in February, if their employees are not showing up, there should be some offset, so, I'm sure...
We do hold them accountable, and we had talks with them and actually held some payment back for days that we know they haven't shown.
Good. All right, so that...
There is accountability there, but still, we have a service issue when they're not there.
Yeah, okay, all right. Any other comments? All right, proceed, keep going. Thank you. Thank you, Dave, that was very good, thank you.
Mayor Dixon, I think I'm going to skip on the next two slides because essentially through our discussions here, it, it is the concrete example of taking a look at, in, in areas, does it make sense to potentially look at bringing employees in or having contracts? So, this is just laying that out, and I, I think through our discussions, we're getting good direction through that. So, at this point, we're, really, we're at the end of this section, so this might be So, at this point, we're really, we're at the end of this section, so this might be a good time to take public comment on service levels and.
Sure. Why don't we do that? We'll take public comments, and we might move up the break that was going to come after the next item, but we've been, you know, we had a long introduction on public comments on non-agenda items. So, let's open it up to public comment on this agenda item, please.
My name is Dennis Baker, and regarding, there's a lot of things that overlap that were talked about, and I want to focus on the pressure washing, but not so much the pressure washing that's done by the city. I'm familiar with what happens down on Baboa Island. That's great. The contractor comes down, they capture all of the water. It's a very professional, well-done. It's done at like 7:00, 8:00 in the morning. The pressure washing I'm concerned about, and this ties into code enforcement, is that that takes place outside of my window at 1:00 in the morning. So, as some of you know, I live right behind the Farmers and Merchants Bank, and a villas has been cited, I think, three or four times as a result of my calling in for pressure washing with no collection of the runoff in the middle of the night. I think it was in front of the yogurt shop there. I had to call in one time because the motor that was running the pressure washer in the back of the pickup truck was outside my bedroom window, and that was at quarter to 12, midnight. And I went down and let those guys know. Now, I'm very aggressive. I know how the system works, so I'm very aggressive at going down, photographing the truck, photographing the license plate and doing all that. But the general public isn't, and I'm very concerned that we have the good part that Dave was talking about, where the city is doing these programs and we have it scheduled, but a lot of the businesses hire, they just hire somebody out of the phone book. And I think sometimes they're not licensed. Quite often, I'm trying to communicate with them, they're not multilingual, so I do a lot of pointing, and, you know, you can't do this and so on. So, I think that's a problem. Now, that comes back to the code enforcement because code enforcement works the regular working hours. There's no code enforcement on the weekend. There is an exception. I know I was talking to John Kaplan. He said he's going out this weekend because of the rain and looking at some construction sites. That's good, but normally, there's nobody out there looking for anything. And yes, we can call the police department, and I normally do, and just tell the operator that I just want to have a record of reporting it. I don't assume there's, you know, black and white's going to be showing up to deal with some pressure washing. So, I don't have a solution for you. However, maybe if we do juggle around the code enforcement hours, if there was some way where they could be rotating shifts or something, where in some of these off-hours occasionally, it wouldn't have to be all the time, but if the people out there that are trying to duck it because they know outside of the working hours, nobody's enforcing it, maybe occasionally catching some of those by having an employee out and shift their duty, you know, instead of being on from 9:00 to 5:00 or whatever it is. They have a night duty or a one weekend every three months or something like that. Maybe that would help a little bit to get the message out that you might get caught. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good comments. Next speaker, please.
When it came to public restrooms, you skipped right past the part on location and went to the maintenance, but location is crucial. There is one place in the city which desperately needs a restroom more than any place else in the city, and it's one place that doesn't have one, and that's at the end of the peninsula. It's very popular with the public. They like to come and wash the surfing and the wedge, but there is no facility for them. It's desperately needed. I'm surprised that the state or the county hasn't gone after us for sanitation violations.
Next speaker, please.
Hi, Sandy Haskell, Shorecliffs. I just wanted to make a comment about the code enforcement. The rest of the city has been counting the days until Matt Cozyline comes back. What was going to be a year has now become a year and a half, and I understand the harbor has problems, but Matt has been here so long and has such a wide variety of experience. I think he would be better used as being overseeing the whole entire operation, and maybe you train somebody for the harbor. Thank you.
Interesting thought. Thank you, Sandy.
Hi, Dorothy Kraus. I want to thank the enforcement, code enforcement department. I get, always get really good service when I call periodically, primarily when I see standing water or excessive use of water by residents or businesses in the city. So, thank you very much for that. I do believe that we need Matt to stay with the harbor department. I think that's where the need is. Perhaps code enforcement could look, do some workflow analysis or promote from within or some training to help balance and fill that supervisory role. Regarding the power washing that's going on, I don't want us to forget about water conservation. Right now, we're getting all this rain, and it's misleading, but we still, we are very much still in a drought situation up and down the state, so please, let's not forget about our water conservation ordinances that we have in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello. My name is Max Johnson, and I'm a 24-year resident of Newport Beach, and I live on the Baboa Peninsula and Peninsula Point community. And so, in regard to the pressure washing, I just wanted to make a comment and first thank Dave and his department. I would concur with other residents as well as staff or council that have thanked Dave, and I think his department just does a fabulous job, as well as Simone's Department, too, code enforcement. They're all always on it when myself or other neighbors call in, so I just wanted to touch upon that first. So, with pressure washing, my recommendation or suggestion would actually be to slightly increase it, I think, in the congestion areas on the peninsula, specifically Baboa Village and the piers, Baboa and Newport piers. I think that if we had a year-round, maybe slightly more than once quarterly, maybe two to three times quarterly, I think that that would make a difference. I think that we both know, I mean, I frequent that area at least five to six times a week, walking or talking to neighbors, and specifically Baboa Pier. I mean, you walk on that, the very end of it, it constantly smells like fish. You know, we have fishermen or hobbyists that come down there, so I think if we can increase, you know, that area pressure washing a little more than we already do, I think that that would help mitigate some of the problems. And I know a lot of visitors that come down kind of after they, you know, experience that, may not want to visit Ruby's or other areas. So, I think if we can increase it a little more, I think that will help, as well as in the village, too. We have the issues with the birds, too, pooping, and outside of some of the restaurants like Baboa Lilies and across the Cruiser Sports Bar, you know, there's quite a lot of feces that fall year-round from those birds. So, when, currently at the rate that we're pressure washing, it's, I don't think it's as much as we could, because it's also in regard to Public Works, the tree trimming. I think that if we increase the tree trimming, that could reduce the amount of poop that's falling on the sidewalks. So, either that or increasing the pressure washing, but that's my suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you, Max. Next speaker, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and council. I'll be very brief. It looks like the right place.
Did you just say your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. Melville. I live on the west side. Going back to the parking enforcement section that you had in the commentary, I don't think there was a break since then. From a residential standpoint, I don't believe there's a code that enforces the maximum number of vehicles per citizen, home, residence, and there seems to be some abuse of that in certain neighborhoods. I don't know if it's because of rental rooms or adult children living at home or whatever, but you can have a relatively small lot of 8,000 square feet with a three-bedroom home and have eight cars and a boat, and they take up a very large segment, and that's a kind of a permanent thing. As far as my research is, I can't find any code on that anywhere. There's some codes on size of vehicles, boats and trucks, but, and I don't like the idea of having the stickers on your cars necessarily, so I don't have a solution, but I do see more of this going on, and it becomes a bit of a problem. Thank you.
And no cars in the garage.
That's true. They're using that for storage.
Thank you. Any other comments? Please come forward.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Ledlaw, and I live right near the intersection of Superior and Coast Highway, and so, speaking to traffic safety, I'm wondering if the city's doing anything about that intersection. One of our dearest residents was just gravely injured there last week.
At Coast and Superior?
Superior and Coast Highway. And we have that wonderful park that you guys have provided, and it's great, and now we're having a lot more use and a lot more kids and soccer, and I'm really worried about pedestrians. There, I don't know if it's just a right-hand turn situation, but the crosswalks are far back, and when the cars come screaming up through the crosswalk to make the right-hand turn on a red or what it is, but we need to protect the people that are going across those two intersections.
Well, we do have an answer to that. Mr. Webb, do you want, just want to briefly update on that? I know it's part of your capital plan, but just to address that comment.
As to the speaker's comment, thankfully, the council's already got a project in our capital improvement program. We're working towards trying to build a pedestrian bridge over Superior to go from the parking lot across, and maybe a future one over Coast Highway at some point. We understand that's a very busy intersection, a lot of pedestrians use that. There are projects in the works. They take some time, but we're heading in that direction to increase the safety and use of that intersection with bridges taking the pedestrians out of the intersection.
Thank you, Dave. Yes, next comment, please. Just hold it.
Okay, my name is Carol Lind. I live in West Newport Beach along West, the West Newport Park. And my, I have two points. The pressure washing, while I recognize that there are some water concerns, I would really like to have, once a year maybe even, our sidewalks along West Newport Park pressure washed because they are really filthy, especially as you get closer to the Santa Ana River. There's a lot of public usage down in that area. Dog, obviously, going to dog park or the illegal dog beach. Anyway, the second point I wanted to mention was the public restroom at Orange and Seashore Drive. That restroom, we have seen your, the service people, the ABM contractors, which we thought were homeless people living out of their van. Anyway, I don't know if they're doing that good a job, obviously, but they, there's a lot of usage at that particular restroom. There's a lot of bicycle traffic, and they all stop there and use it on the weekends, and I know we have some homeless people in the area.
Thank you very much for speaking. Any other comments? Please come forward.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Bernie Svalstad, Chairman of Cronomar Business Improvement District. We have a new council person, but we've requested through Dave Webb that this year, that the sidewalks in Cronomar be cleaned once a year, not every quarter, but once a year. To my knowledge, they've been cleaned once in the last 15 years. Used to be that Cronomar brought in, aside from Fashion Island, maybe the automobile industry, most sales tax, third in the city of Newport Beach, so we have a lot of people there, too, and we've asked for some increased code enforcement on some of the restaurants that give us a problem. We request in your budget, once a year, annual cleaning for Cronomar. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other public comments?
Mayor Dixon and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. There were quite a few topics covered in this last section regarding the sidewalk cleaning. I wanted to point out that we have a number of bus stops in Newport Beach, and a few years ago, in their wisdom, the Orange County Transportation Authority took away the shade structures and benches at some of them, particularly along Coast Highway between here and Dover. And with the removal of the benches, they took away the trash cans, and so we have bus stops, several of them, with no trash cans, which I think is inviting a problem, and it does have a problem. People waiting for the bus have nowhere to discard their trash. A second thing that was covered, and I was pleased to see that you're not giving any immediate direction to the community development staff to institute a proactive code enforcement posture on all issues city-wide. Before you do that, I think that needs much more community dialogue as to what the proper balance is on that. Regarding the discussion of insourcing and outsourcing, I differ with Councilmember Muldoon. I very strongly support insourcing of services that used to be insourced. Many of them were outsourced because of the situation with the pensions and because the contractors could pay less than prevailing wage, and those two things have both changed. We have the pepper employees, and the contractors now have to provide the prevailing wage. And one slide at the end of the presentation you did not see, we're showing a comparison, like for streetlight maintenance, and it seems attractive now to have city employees doing those things that were contracted out, and I think there is an intangible benefit to that, as Director Webb was saying, that the city employees are going to be more invested in providing good service than the contract employees were. And then at the very beginning of the discussion, we had about the motor officers in the police department. I think that's police talk for motorcycle officers, and in my experience, mostly traveling around as a bicyclist, most of the traffic stops I see are by the patrol cars of traffic violations rather than the motorcycle officers, maybe half and half, I don't know. So, before making a decision about that, I think it would be important to know how much the traffic enforcement is being conducted by the other police officers, not the ones that are on the motorcycles. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right. See, none?
If I could interject just back to one of the comments the public made, and I touched on this a little bit in the pressure washing discussion. One of the folks that, we have had several requests for more. One of the areas is Cronomar, and I just want to advise the council, as Mr. Stolz had said. They had just recently, through their board, requested, I think a letter came to you, that they get at least once a year cleaning on that. We did a cost analysis. It costs about $6,000 to clean the entire sidewalks of Cronomar every year.
Once a year?
Once a year. So, if you want to consider any kind of levels, it's about $6,000 to clean all the sidewalks there. We do spot clean in Cronomar, but we don't clean all the sidewalks.
All right. See, no further discussion up here? Why do, why to take a, what do we want to take? Fast? Mr. Muldoon wants to take a fast break. Why don't we say a seven-minute break? Be back here at 11:15, if you would, please. Okay? Don't everybody go to the bathroom at once. And proposed capital projects put forward by Public Works. Mr. Webb, if you'd like to present.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, for the time and the opportunity to go through this. We're going to start a little different format because we always have a lot of questions on current projects of interest. All these projects on the screen here are in our capital improvement program now. Council's approved these, and they're moving forward. I wanted to point out, we've got a new resource for you, and I'd also want to point out and thank Jamie Copeland in our back. She's our finance and administrative director. She was the brainchild behind this book. I think you're going to like it. If you pick one up on the table and bring one to your friends, you're going. This is a quick, short summary. Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Yeah, just real quickly, most of these are approved projects. I think they all are. The council's previously recused themselves on many of these items. If they want to announce their conflicts now, then if there's actual discussion about any of them, then we can, and then we can have them leave the room, but probably best just to get on the record their conflicts related to this item.
So, real quick, my goal was not to talk about any of these today unless you specifically want some, all the information's in the book.
Okay, so maybe we can just hold off on announcing the conflicts if we actually address any of them.
Okay.
All right. We're going to move into some other projects of interest. And for the council's sake and the community, these are all, you're going to see, projects that we feel are emerging that need to be addressed, or a lot of these are from the community themselves, and we want to bring to the council attention that we've had a lot of inquiries and other things to look into. So, this first project has to do with the Newport Pier and McFadden Square and the oceanfront parking lot. And as we mentioned earlier, this is one of our ground zeros with a lot of tourism, a lot of folks that go to this area. It's the picture that everybody goes for Newport. You see them down by the pier, and they take their picture, and they've been to Newport. So, this area was last rehabilitated, a major rehabilitation back in 1990 where we did all kinds of improvements to the area. And as our discussions have been going, particularly through the mayor's town hall meetings and trying to work through some of the issues with the boardwalk issues, the general consensus is steering towards we should do a dual trail system like they have in many other cities, Long Beach and Huntington Beach, where we put the wheeled traffic on one trail and the walkers on the other trail, basically. It has some challenges to it, obviously. You can imagine with the San and the Coast Commission, the geometric of the plaza itself. And we're thinking maybe this should go between maybe 15th Street to 36th Street. That's the real heavy portion of the trail. So, we're looking for some guidance on this. Maybe the thought would be to start undertaking a, what I'd call, an infrastructure upgrade and rehabilitation concept plan. Maybe we can lay out some lines of how we would move these trails through, get some thoughts from the community, particularly going through the plaza. Uh, again, the challenge here is probably getting Coast Commission to permit something like that, but we probably need to start something. So, I wanted to get some feedback if you'd be interested in going that direction.
Any comments?
Well, one of the things I've actually seen when I go down to the plaza is the Centennial Sphere actually causes kind of a weird congestion issue of bicycles going through. Has, have we ever talked about, I mean, I'm, I'm hoping this isn't open a can of worms, but have we ever talked about putting that in as a permanent installation in our sculpture garden, given that it's a sculpture very specific to the Civic Center, actually, more than, more so than it would be down at the, at the pier?
Actually, I have never heard that, and that's a great idea. Um, I would say that the spear, I understand, before my time, was a fundraising effort of the community, and they put it there. Um, to redo the plaza, we might want to talk about relocating that. I, I do know, too, there's some maintenance issues with the way the spear's laid out, because there's a lot of donors' plaques on the ground that are constantly covered in ice cream and sand and things, and we have to power wash them. And then the people call me and say, "I can't read my name, because you blew all the paint out of the lines." So, it might make more sense to put it on a vertical-type thing and move it if we get into that discussion, but that could be part of this concept plan.
Any other questions?
Ooh, could I just say one thing about that proposal? I'd like for us to look at having art scattered throughout the city a lot more than concentrating it all in our sculpture garden, so that people who don't get to our sculpture garden also have the chance to appreciate public art. So, that's a bigger discussion.
On this side, no. I'm always turning my right. Any comments over here? What, what are your thoughts, though, for, just the bike paths? Are you looking, are you looking at other structural areas that have not been improved in 30 years?
I, I think you have some needs down there. For instance, let's start with the restroom we talked earlier about. We might be at a point we need to enlarge or redo that restroom, maybe to handle some of the people that handle it now. Um, it surely probably, it's had its time and where. There's a kiosk in the area that used to be a functional thing for ATMs, but those are going away. Maybe we repurpose that. The grounds of the McFadden Plaza itself, the brick and everything has been worn out. We might want to relook at the structure of that. And I know we've added the Ben Carlson statue, some of the areas. It was originally built to have some civic events out there, maybe bands and things like that, but those opportunities have been removed when you put, like, for instance, the statue, and that was one of the areas that was going to sup, support that. So, that might be one thing, how the, the plaza works itself. Also, how we would move the traffic as, as, we've talked with the residents many times, and the mayor, through the parking lot in McFadden. It's, it's very, um, tight. Parking's in huge demand. Everybody wants to be there, and we now have, as you know, our, our passers-through on bikes to go through the travel lanes of the plaza. It's a little, a little tricky, but it's, it works. Can we move that outside? Can we make the boardwalk bigger? That boardwalk right in front of the seawall there is extremely congested. There are people there all the time. Can we make that a little wider? Um, those would be the things we'd want to talk about. All the way down to the 15th Street restroom, which was talked about, it needs to be rehabilitated, and there's an opportunity for the plaza there. Maybe we start the separation and go down. Um, those would all be part of some plan. It could be anywhere you want. It could be tied into the pier development.
Well, uh, since it's in my district, I'll just comment. I, it's something I, I would support, looking at these different concepts. I do not think we need to do it all in one year. Maybe there's kind of a master plan concept to do it over a period of time, and from a funding standpoint as well. But, uh, if, if my colleagues agree, it's just keep moving the thought process forward. We do need improvement down there.
I'm sorry, Aaron, I think wanted to say something.
Oh, I, I, before I leave this item, I just want to note for the record that the city clerk accused herself based on a real property interest.
Okay.
So, I'm getting a sense that maybe add something to start a concept development, multi-year program, maybe four or five years before we actually get there, because it's permitting, it's going to take some time.
Yeah, I would support that.
Okay. We'll propose, if that's the case, the council will propose these. When you see the early look, you'll start seeing some information on this.
Right, thank you.
Next area, we've had increasing, uh, comments, and I'm not sure what's driving it, but as one of our major entry points, points into Newport Beach, the, the three that I think really are the Coast Highway entry points, and Newport Boulevard, as you come off the 55 freeway in. That area's looking worn and tired, and I, I started picking up on it and asking our staff about this. Why is this looking this way? We have a lot of vegetation leaving. Um, we've got, obviously, an active sand ditch project going through there right now, but we have some other concerns in there. My staff informed me, too, it's interesting that none of those medians are irrigated. They're all water-trucked. They were put in the seventies, so that's partly why they're struggling. Um, so maybe some beautification enhancement here. The other thing, and if you can look at one of these slides, I was kind of trying to show you some snapshots, but just take a note of this as you drive through. Our city corporate yard, as you go through, is right on the right-hand side, and that's where a refuge transfer station is, and it's very visible from the highway. Uh, we do get complaints across the street, so that might be something. I was talking to staff, maybe we can change that fence out, do something, a little more beautification, thicken the trees up there. I do recognize this is a state highway, but we are getting concerns from the residents to, to complaints about this. Um, and it leads into one of my next slides, too. So, I'm going to just leave it at that and see if there's any interest in maybe doing some kind of plan to start doing some, maybe not an overdue, but a revegetation and improvement of this as you come into Newport Beach.
Do you have any comments, Mr. Avery?
Just speaking as a, as a councilperson, it's my district area, but also as a resident, you know, I'm just a fan of upgrading the entries in Newport Beach. And frankly, I'm a little jealous of the mayor's, uh, area where you just go over that bridge, and all of a sudden, that, all that work that was done in the medians, and that everything's kind of grown now for a couple of years. It's absolutely, in my view, spectacular. It's a great public good to do that, as expensive as it can be. I just think it elevates, as a property owner, I'm just happy anytime I see that, because I think it just helps lift the whole city, property values, everything else. And I think it's important that when people come into town, they, they know they've reached Newport. It's just, it's just, there's a change. And that's happened, obviously, we've made that happen. It certainly happens when you come into Corona Del Mar. We're working on that on, uh, in West Newport, uh, through, you know, a phased program. And this is, this is really the gateway to Newport, when you think about it, when people are coming down the 55 and entering into our town. And this area's been quasi, has had difficulties all the way along. Old Newport Boulevard, this, this, this Boulevard coming into town has never been great, and it would just be, I think, something we could do incrementally over time, work it into the budget, that kind of thing. I'm totally supportive of. Thank you.
Any other comments? Ms. Berner?
Yeah, I'd just like to add that I think some of us get used to looking at some of these areas, sort of how they've always been, and we haven't really looked at it with fresh eyes. And I think it's, it's good that you're bringing this to our attention, because it's not consistent with the rest of Newport Beach, so we should definitely look forward to improving this.
I think you have some good guidance there. Thank you.
So, we'll see if we can find a way to maybe start this project into the CIP discussion.
Similarly, with the Newport Boulevard on this next slide.
Yeah, so this next project kind of ties into the last project. Um, this is Old Newport Boulevard, which historically, if, for those old timers folks, this was the old way into Newport. It used to go across where Central Avenue is on the peninsula. Now, we had a bridge there before the Newport, Old Newport Boulevard was built. Um, this is a, kind of a transitional business area, and it combines with the resident side of Newport Heights as it goes in there. A lot of medical plazas and stuff. We've recently meet, met with some business owners out there who've been asking for improvements there, and I, unfortunately, Councilmember Duffy's not here, but I spent some time with him and some of the business owners, and I've been, Brad's been contacted, too, about this area. It's probably due for some upgrades. Maybe it's undergrounding. You can see one of the pictures. As you come in, actually, when you come into town on Old, on Old Newport, there's dirt shoulders, people are parking there now, vans and things like that. It, it probably needs some attention, maybe some undergrounding. I'm not sure how best to move this forward. We have a general plan update coming. Maybe that plays into this, too, on how you might want to see this area revitalized. But I do know we have a group of folks that would like to see some attention here, and I wanted to bring that to your attention.
Well, I, I support it. Mayor Potem?
Um, thinking, thinking back on the, actually, the last item, and maybe even this one. Uh, in years past, one of the ways we've been able to upgrade a lot of the median, uh, has been using the, so, coming back all the way to the beginning of the meeting, when we were talking about the finances on the surplus of the $13 million, uh, the mayor and I, a few years back, had created a, an F policy, a council policy, dealing with how to treat surpluses. And half of it typically goes to long-term debt, include, which includes pensions, and the other half goes to neighborhood improvement projects. In years past, we've used surpluses to help with the neighborhood enhancement projects, oftentimes actually have gone into medians. So, if we're looking for ways to spend the other half of the surplus, um, it might be worth, uh, taking a look at the, at this as a, essentially a one-time expense to upgrade the, the entryway.
I support that. Any other comment?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Muldoon.
Going to say, when compared to the Newport Boulevard entry versus the Old Newport Boulevard, the difference I, one that I see is that the primary concerns that the residents share, I think, about aesthetics related to Newport Boulevard are pretty much city issues, like the, the corporate yard and, um, landscape, with the exception of, of the median, which Mayor Potem O'Neill pointed out. The Old Newport Boulevard area, essentially, it's a business district. It's, it's private development, and there's some residents right up against it as well. Wonder if it's more of a general plan item, like you segued, um, because it's, it's sort of a bigger lift, I would, I would say, and involves more private entities. Um, so, I like that thought more than, uh, dealing with it immediately. That's me. Thank you.
Can I just say something real quick?
Yes, sure, please. Yes, go ahead.
You know, there's certain areas of this city that I drive to, and that I go into, excuse me, and, um, it's like stepping back into the past, and I love it.[1228.01][1228.01][laughing] I do, I do. I love this old area of the city. So, it, yeah, granted, that street looks like hell, and, oh, excuse me, it looks, looks bad. And I don't like all the, uh, the overhead utilities and that type of thing, but, um, I just want to caution us about not totally destroying the nature and the, uh, ambiance of this beach town and certain areas of it. Thank you.
Good comment. Any more comments?
Happened on Old Newport Boulevard in the last 10 years, for those of you who've gone down, it, it's been a lot of investment recently. It's been a real uptick in, in new, new buildings. Some of them are medical buildings. There's a, quite a large one going up now. So, people are starting to invest on Old Newport Boulevard, and, and I think it's a good thing. I agree with my, uh, councilmember, Herdman, and you hate to see these old neighborhoods kind of go, but, um, you know, property values are up, and they demand highest and best use and the rest of it. And it's, you know, it's sewn for it. They get to do the develop, they, development they would like to see there. And, uh, by and large, I think it's, it's, it's good. And so, I think we, we, obviously, we're in partners with all the businesses in town, in the sense that we deliver a, a great city, and they also deliver a great city by having a thriving business in our town. So, um, I think we should, in my mind, uh, it's, we could encourage more growth on Old Newport Boulevard of, uh, private business, and, uh, you know, by cleaning it up, make it a more inviting place for someone to, uh, invest on, in their property, and, uh, make it just all around better for everyone. Thank you.
I had one other question. I know we have a street paving master plan, so where, where is this in the cycle? So, this actually isn't, it's a concrete street, and we've talked about it. It's not on the master plan currently. Um, the concrete is old. We talked about maybe diamond grinding it, like they do in the freeways, just to get the roughness out of it, but leave the concrete in place. It's not structurally deficient, but you'll notice on the sides, we have asphalt. We, we do keep that up. Um, I, it's, hearing what the council says, maybe the direction might be to look at this a little more intensely in the general plan update. Um, and then we, out of that might come some public improvements tied with private improvements, depending what you want to do with it. It is an area in transition. It's right on the border between residential and commercial, and I know a lot of the areas have been, uh, turning over, medical, we have a big development going on there right now, so. All right. Well, I, I mean, from a fiscal standpoint, it'd be great to, to have an idea of how much it would cost to redo some of the, some of the street there, because I agree with Councilman Herdman, it's, it's not looking great. But the, the, part of my, part of my thought there is that with the additional gas tax money that has been coming in, in addition to the Measure M, I know we've been getting out ahead of the street pavement, because we have that additional, the, the additional gas tax money, even if the governor's saying that he's thinking of taking that away from people who don't build enough residences. But anyway, assuming that we continue to get it, it strikes me that if we're getting out ahead of the street ma, uh, pavement master plan anyway because of it, maybe take a look at how much this would cost.
We will do that. And one last comment on that. I remember the old plan that was here, they talked about maybe moving the parking into the center. That's one thing, we didn't want to get too much reconstruction in there, because if we put in a new street, and then we tear it all up. So, we'll need some guidance. We'll surely keep it in a good maintenance state, but I don't think we'd come in and replace the street.
One other thing I'll say about, uh, Mr. Herdman's comment about overhead, because it is not a residential community, uh, we don't have the residents driving that undergrounding, uh, ambition. Uh, so I'm just throwing this out here, how we might organize, there's no business, organized business district there, or business group.
But we, but we do have monies available for business districts for undergrounding.
We, we do have a funding source.
A20 or something?
It's 20A, but there's, our, our allotment is only a couple hundred thousand dollars a year, and with doing Balboa Boulevard, council's direction on that, that'll eat that up, and will be mortgaged out for five years. It would be 20 years, probably, before we could get to this. Just knowing, council gave a direction on 28 to go to Superior, and I think Hospital Road next, which is, that's the next 20 years. But they could do a 20B here if the, if the businesses got together and wanted to take it upon themselves.
And I don't think anybody, uh, maybe that's something, Mr. Avery, you could work with your business owners. Maybe they would want to organize and, and assess themselves and consider that process. So, something to consider, also, as we go forward. Okay, keep going.
And just to note, for the record, Councilmember Muldoon stepped out because he has a business interest, um, and has a conflict related to undergrounding matters, and that's why he left.
Okay, he's back.
So, I think, we've got a tone with council's direction, to try to work this in the general plan, keep the maintenance up on it, and, uh, we'll.
But it's a good target area, yes.
And target in the future. So, the other area that's been coming up for the past several years, and then again, this is the older side of town, uh, this is on, um, the Avon Extension, Santa Ana Avenue, and just on, behind Coast Highway, the Medical Office, A's Restaurant is just on the left there. There's an area in there that is, there's partly city slopes, partly private slopes. There's no actual sidewalk that runs down Santa Ana Avenue, and we've had some requests to do something in this area. I'm not sure what it would be. This area was talked about a little bit when we were talking about Mariners' Mile, and, and maybe even having a connection from Avon up to Santa Ana. So, we probably ought to do something in that area. That's the residents' request. I'm not sure if council would like to undertake that. Our, the thought is maybe start doing an improvement design project in that area.
Mr. Avery, do you?
I've been well aware of this for a while. Um, I've met with Dave out there, and, uh, we've looked at it, and it's another one of these areas that sort of has been forgotten. There's a really interesting parcel of land behind A's that the city has, that, you know, something should be done with. It's, there are very few places in this city now where stuff is just left fallow. So, this is one of them, one of these parcels. That's interesting to me. But also, the, uh, sidewalk, uh, because that street is steep, cars get rolling down that, and, uh, right now, for pedestrians, people walking, biking, there's no way to sort of get some safety off the street. So, I know that it's problematic, because there is, is a pretty significant grade there. And then tying it in, hopefully, trying to find a way to tie it in to get bikers coming down from the heights, um, you know, a more safe route to the beach, that kind of thing. So, I know that's all part and parcel to it, and of course, the right-hand turn there at the arches. So, there's a lot going on in this, but I think it's all good. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, good. I think we could proceed in looking at that as another target area.
We'll take a look at it. And, and I would say, just on that note, I heard Mr. Herdman said priorities. If there's any sense of council's major priorities, you can surely give that to us. Staff load and project load is a restriction to our capital program. There's a lot there, so we'd surely be happy to take on any one of these projects, but if there are some that you feel more likely than the other to go for, please let us know.
Well, I think as we go forward, too, I mean, it doesn't all have to be this year. That's what I said, certainly, about my, and I mean, these things, we can't solve these problems in a year, but we could initiate a five-year, three-to-five-year program on that. I think that is to kind of smooth out your staff's requirements, too.
I'd just like to add, Dave, I'd like to see, um, what the public benefits are to the different projects. So, in this case, you know, I, I'd need to see whether it is the bike trails and the increased safety, or, or what actually is the incentive for us to do various projects. So, if you could include that in the analysis, that would be helpful.
Try to, try to do that. That's [laughing].
As long as we're in.
My thought might be different from the folks out there, but.
Um, in that same area, what's the status of that Caltrans lot across from A? Don't we get that back? Are we going to do something with that, or?
We, we are working on that. We have a project in the CIP to improve the intersection of Coast Highway and Old Newport right now. Mr. Sinekory, our acting city engineer is here and can give you information. But we are looking to try to maybe incorporate that, purchase that, or something to offset the parking in the area. It's, it's part of the plan and discussion with, uh, Caltrans.
Okay, all right.
So, moving to our next area, Ocean Boulevard Concrete Street Replacement. This is between Carnation and Goldenrod, and we'd probably also include Carnation. Uh, really old street in this area. If you recall, the last few years, we've been working in this area. We've done Ocean Boulevard, basically, from, uh, Goldenrod all the way over to, uh, Poppy, and we also did Poppy to Coast Highway, replaced all the streets. This area has been left, uh, basically, because we just couldn't get to. We started an effort here. Um, there is a, a bit of a swell in the community to start looking at this. We've heard from residents. There's also another little thing in this area. Uh, we have, uh, with the house development at the top of the ramp there, kind of sparked a little issue with trying to develop a public outreach or an outlook there. Um, that is, uh, public property, if you're not aware, at the end of Dally, it's a paper street that goes down into the bay, and there is an opportunity to do something there. So, we probably ought to start looking at this, and wanted to see if you wanted to, uh, start looking at this again and move it forward.
Yeah. Madam Runner?
Yes, I do have a comment on this one. Because we've been aware of the, of the space there that is public property and because the new construction is impacting that and making us look at whether we want to develop it for a view park or whatever, it, something that we don't want to lose our public, our public property there. And we don't want it to be encroached upon by someone who is developing the adjacent property. But one of the things we've discovered in being out there and observing is there are a lot of people that go down to this area to see the sunset. In fact, we've even had pictures of people in wheelchairs, several people in wheelchairs, that roll down there and sit in the streets so that they can look at the sunset over China Cove. And so, there is a bit of an incentive to do something with this property before it gets encroached upon and so that it eliminates people having to sit in the street to watch the sunset.
There is some community work we need to do on this. It's not an easy project to Joy's comment there. If you're familiar with that area, that street is very wide. And putting it all back as concrete, one of the original concepts was maybe a little more landscaping, add some parking to the area. They can be controversial, but there's a need. Everybody wants more parking. So, we'd have to work with the community if you wanted to move this project.
Any other comments?
I have to recuse myself on the next topic because of real property interests.
Okay, Babo Island Drainage Upgrade Automation.
So, we wanted to bring this project to you. It's an emerging trend. This, this discussion started, as you know, years ago in what was the former city council subcommittee, Tidlins Committee, when we have talked about capping the wall and how we're going to handle Babo Island. Babo Island, for those who don't know, is really constructed in the late 20s, earlys, 30s, and it's kind of stayed in its original shape. And the way they used to drain the island is basically the water runs down the end of the street. There was a pipe that went through the seawall and actually started with a wood plug in that pipe. And at high tides, they put the plug in, and on low tides, they pull it and the water would flow out. The challenge with that is when we have rainfalls and high tides, Babo is a bit of a bathtub. We have to keep those gates closed now. They're manually-opered tide gates. It's very labor-intensive. In fact, I was talking to Mark this morning, as many of us slept. He had 18 folks out in the island working the tide gates and also pumping operations. And that is a frequent cause for us. We had on Thanksgiving and Christmas this year, a lot of overtime labor. It's all usually done early mornings and when the high tides are with us. So, many cities, in fact, my former city, Huntington Beach, Seal Beach, have gone to an automated pumping system on their low-lying areas. And I think we probably ought to start looking at this direction. We're in the process of probably having to upgrade the infrastructure anywhere in Babo Island. So, I have just a little exhibit we talked about in the Tidlins Committee, but the concept would be probably to collect these, all these individual drains into more formal area, put it through a pump system that's automated, so we don't have to get into the routine of turning the valves all the time, and it just goes that. That simplifies the labor costs, adds some safety components, because this now is size for a 100-year storm versus, we just had the rain, I think it was in Christmas, in one of my slides, the prior one there, is actually the streets flooded. We have a low tide, because we just can't get the water off the island. We had to pump it. That would solve one of those problems, too, in this case. The other thing that it's a benefit to this is, in our water quality side, we start developing what we did in Huntington. All the low flows then pumped off and goes through the sewer, and we capture that. And we can also screen the discharge from the pump to remove solids and trash. So, we get some environmental benefits by doing this, along with one-point discharge versus a one or maybe 10 turn into one. So, that's something we want to try to talk about and maybe move forward. Talking to staff, we're probably looking at a $10 to $15 million effort, maybe over the next 10 years. And this is important now, why this discussion's coming up, because as you know, we just recently passed a undergrounding district on the island, which means we're going to be undergrounding the West End Overhead Utilities Underground. We're doing waterline work, and there's been a big call, as we've had from Marine Avenue, others, to start replacing the streets on the island. They're the original streets also. I really don't think we want to get into pavement replacement before we get the underground figured out. So, we need to get the drainage figured out, which is underground facility, before we start replacing streets. I put the benefits on here, but I wanted to just kind of bring that to the council's attention. I think it's probably time we start moving this direction, start saving and investing for it, and get your thoughts on that.
Because Mr. Webb just correlated undergrounding with the drainage, was I going to leave, or am I able to participate?
I think we just bifurcate the discussion of it. And if they want, if someone wants specifically to talk about undergrounding, then we can talk about that, and you can recuse yourself.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I apologize. This is really about drainage, not an undergrounding discussion.
So, are you saying you want to move forward on?
We think it's time we start moving forward and investing in this area. We wanted to expose the number that we think, it might be a little bit more, because there's going to be some storm drains to be built, to. We have a lot of community outreach. We're going to have to start working with the island. A lot of discussions already going on there with the Marine Avenue. We just had the bridge. We've had the seawall cap. These things take a lot of time. So, if it's okay with you, we're going to start having discussions with the island, start planning and moving that direction.
So, are there, also are there outside funds that could help support the $10 to $15 million?
Well, that's a good question. Typically, storm drains are general fund expenses, but there are some abilities to maybe capture some grants. In this case, there's two areas I can see some benefit. If you remember the last study session Simone Jurgis gave and his staff in regards to FEMA, one of the things we did in Huntington Beach, I'll just draw on that experience, is once we fortified and got the pumping systems in place, we were able to remove the whole south side of Huntington Beach out of the floodplain, because we could prove that we had a solid barrier and could discharge a 100-year storm. So, and that's, that's a little ways off, but once you get the pumping system in, and if we come back to the seawall, which is not, it's for FEMA-certified compliance, it'd have to be completely closed and at a certain elevation, you eventually could maybe solve that problem. That's one, that's one benefit. And FEMA might contribute towards that. So, there's a funding source. We could go after what they call hazard mitigation money and maybe get some grants. And I think, Diane, you're familiar with that. You heard a little bit about in Washington. That would be a target here. The other way is, and it's probably not popular, but storm drains do have the ability to have storm drain fees applied just for drainage. And there's also CFDs. This particularly benefits the island, so maybe if the council so chooses, they could help fund that. I don't know. I'm just throwing out there are funding options, or it could be a pure general fund expense.
Okay. Well, we could look at that. I know eastern cities do this fee collection as a matter of course, in Florida and Gulf areas particularly. And then they go away after the funds are achieved. But for the specific purpose, because it lowers the FEMA insurance costs, there's a benefit there.
We would surely try to apply for hazard mitigation money once we get a design.
That's a big, big go forward. Okay. Yeah, I support that, developing the plan going forward.
Okay. Moving on to the next. I just wanted to point this out, and I think council talked a little bit about this, but we're starting the comprehensive update for the general plan. Our community development department will be working on this. But there is a significant investment in this plan. We're talking about $2.5 million over the next probably two, three years. So, what we're going to recommend, we've worked with the community development folks, and we're going to ask that we put $1.5 million in the CIP this year. Probably need another million next year to complete this effort. And we just want to bring that to your attention, make sure that is the direction you'd like to go.
Yes. Does anyone have a comment before I speak? Did you want to say something? There have been many public comments on this in terms of the overall cost. I just want to remind people that if we don't have to spend $2.5 million, we won't. And that's not, we're not trying to hit that number, and the bell goes off. And we will be looking to see, and very carefully, as we go through the general plan update, this, after we do the listen and learn, or it will may come out of the listen and learn process, is we may narrow our scope of what we really need to update in the general plan. And that definitely will affect our outlet costs going forward.
So, moving to another project of interest that's been, is debated in various locations in the city, but particularly in the Newport Pier area. We know that the Inn Restaurant is dysfunctional, and we need to address that old building out there. And so, Simone Jurgis and Lauren Wooding with our CCD department have been looking at and working with restaurant vendors and probably a new type of facility out there. In that discussion that's come up, one of the requests and thoughts is maybe moving the restaurant closer to the main shore. And there's a number of good reasons for that, particularly the operator likes that. It drives more traffic, makes it more accessible. It also separates one of the big problems we have with the fishermen and the restaurant at the end of the pier. We have state mandates that have to allow public fishing free on the end of the pier, but it also interferes with the restaurant operation. So, we could separate the two if we did something like this. We've been working with our lifeguard folks and various sighting ideas. We haven't got it sighted particularly, but we wanted to make sure that we're on board with where you want to go, because we'd have to talk to the community. So, one of the thoughts is, should we explore maybe trying to do a new restaurant closer somewhere else along the pier? This example here just shows, right where we have the tee pop out in the middle, maybe that's a location. They're also talking about maybe between the end, and that location might be a favorable spot. But we wanted to bring this to your attention before we start talking to the community in depth, and get your thoughts.
Well, I'll first comment, and thank you for bringing this. Actually, I think it was a very brilliant suggestion when somebody on your staff came up with this, maybe it was you, to move the restaurant foundation closer to the beach for a lot of positive benefits, for just access, if for nothing else, and then not to conflict with the fisher men, men and women who are fishing at the end of the pier. So, I think that has notable benefits. And we do have a restaurant who's, and we've been negotiating with and working with, and to be the operator of the restaurant and bear some of these costs. We have to retrofit the pier anyway. This would be an additional cost to the city, but there possibly could be some cost sharing with that restaurant entity, because they have been patiently working with us and we patiently working with them to find a, find some way to put a successful commercial entity there. So, I'm supportive of taking the next step of exploring it. Is anyone else?
Yeah. I really like this idea as well, Mr. Webb. The very end of the pier, do you see how it's, it shows it's filled in? I know that there's a foundation and utilities under the restaurant. And if that were to be cut out as an open square, the fishermen could also fish in. I don't know if that's possible. That, that'd be nice. But is there a cost savings in not having to provide new sewer and other infrastructure all the way down at the end of the pier, if we do it where it's located in red?
There's surely, the closer we get to the beach, the less cost is going to be. It's more efficient. We don't have the utilities out there. I haven't heard that idea, but I like the idea, maybe opening the center of the pier to, it would also reduce costs there, because there's piles there that need to be replaced. And the cost of the piles might be a little less if we don't put a load on top of it. So, there is some benefits to bring in for it, along with the restaurant entrepreneur likes it here. I did want to give the credit to Simone Jurgis and his staff. He was the one that kind of thought, hey, why don't we bring this closer, like San Clemente? And from a marketing standpoint, makes a lot of sense, so.
That was a answer. That was good. Thank you, Simone. Okay, yes, keep.
All right, rolling right along.
Before we get to this next.
I need to recuse myself on this issue.
And it's based on real property interests.
So, this next item is actually from an outside agency, and I want to just bring your attention. There, there is a request, and wanted to talk to you a little bit about today. The Orange Coast River Park folks are in the process of developing their vision plan, which is really a plan that's going to kind of shape going forward with their project. I don't have all the details on this, but I do know this is an important element for them and possibly for the cities. What they're looking for basically and hoping for is that each adjacent agency, that'd be Newport Beach, Huntington Beach, Costa Mesa, and the county, would make a contribution. In this case, they're looking for maybe $20,000 towards the development of this plan, which would have benefits to the city. So, I didn't want to take all the thunder from them. They're here today, if you'd like to have them talk to this or give you any information, but the general request is, they'd like to see if you'd like to contribute towards the development of their vision plan.
Have other cities stepped up?
Bob Wilson's here. I think he's the president of the Orange Coast River Park. Maybe you want to talk to that, Bob?
Here, council people. We have, you are the first ones we've approached. We are, obviously, all of the agencies right now, the county, Huntington Beach, and Costa Mesa are in their budget planning processes. We plan to make a similar request to each of those. So, but you are the first because of the date of the planning session. So.
Any questions of Mr. Wilson on?
Thank you.
Any other comments? I know some other members of the organization are here. Any of, anybody else? Yes. Okay, all right.
I think they have some literature, too. If you want to leave that with them, we can get that to the council about it.
Can everybody hear me? Maybe I was not talking loudly enough. Is there anyone who wants to speak? I thought, Mrs. Petros, do you want to say anything?
No.
Okay, all right. What are you looking, go ahead, Mayor Fortham.
Doesn't this fit really well within our grant funding request? I mean, every year we have requests for these sorts of things. Doesn't it fit within council policies on bringing this sort of item together and competing with other organizations that are requesting funding for this sort of, this sort of community-wide request for, I mean, this is essentially a grant fund from the city. So, isn't this something that would be discussed within the overall scheme of grant funding?
I think we could do, do it through that process. I want to say we had just allocated grant funds in November, I want to say. So, I think it would just be a matter of the timing piece of that then. So, another consideration would, to do it outside of that process and just directly appropriate. But it could also be done during the grant process. I'm just thinking of the timing on that piece.
Yeah. Just, just one point to that, too. I think the reason why they're looking at maybe a contribution through what we'd call the CIP is, a lot of their facilities you see on there ties integrally into our facilities. Sunset Ridge Park would flow, Sunset Ridge Park would flow right into theirs with trails and things. A little different than a standalone grant, but we could do it either way that council chooses.
I'd probably have to look back at what we had, all the grants that we got requested, because I remember this was a, this is a discussion we get every year when, when community groups, very worthy, come in and ask us for one-offs. It's hard, because we're, all the other folks who are going through the grant process that are requesting funding as well, we're, they're all competing against one another, and we're having to have the priority discussion during that, that process. And so, it's always a tough thing when we're talking one-off, one-off contributions.
And as I'm recalling a little further, I think November was a little late this year. I don't know why we can't align this with the budget process with the grants, too. So, then that would kind of make sense, too, to have, you know, the funding allocation, depending on what you want to allocate in total amount for grants, you know, with, with the budget, and have appropriations happen closely thereof. So, we can take a look at that aspect of it, too.
I do believe, and that's probably a good path. I do, I do know that we, through the, I think it was through the grant process of terrorists here, she probably, yes, you are there. Didn't we fund some aspect of having a consultant for this organization to do, didn't we do this, Toni Petros, and I didn't, Kristen, didn't we do this, to fund the consultant to do the design of what we're looking at in this picture?
You and Councilman Petros put in some dollars to, so that we could hire a consultant to do just this, the scope of work for this vision plan. So, we finally got that consultant to produce this document. We would be ready to go out to consultants to hire, but we need the dollars for the actual vision plan, which is a much larger project than just the scope of work. So, that's what we're trying to do, is to go to the various agencies who, whose jurisdictions include this area and see if they would contribute funds. We would also need to get grant money on top of that. So, this is just another bit in the bigger picture of getting a vision plan. And to have a vision plan makes it easier for Newport, Costa Mesa, the county, to get grants for the pieces within the Orange Coast River Park. A lot of times, if you just try and get a grant for one little piece, an agency, state agency, for instance, may say, well, you know, what does that have to do with a regional issue? So, this is more of a regional plan we're trying to put together. And that's why we're going to all the different agencies involved in the Orange Coast River Park.
Okay. Well, thank you for that clarification. So, this is just, would be $20,000 put in our budget that we will be going through this process. So, it enables you to put together the vision plan that you can go out and raise money to support the work.
Correct. The vision plan is also, is quite a lot of work in compiling data, all the EIRs, all the studies that have been done in Banning Ranch, Fairview Park, Newport Beach. Put that all together for use by the cities and the county as they're going through with their own projects. So, if you have something in Seminole Slough or another Sunset Ridge, or even beach project, you've got this overall plan, and you can show your grant, your granters, we have this plan to do such and such in the Orange Coast River Park. And they may say, oh, that's, that's a viable project if it's on a bigger scale.
I see. Okay. Well, thank you for clarifying that. All right. Any comments or questions?
So, just for clarity, is the direction the council, you prefer to see it through the grant process, or would you like us to try to have a holder in the CIP?
Well, just a reminder to all of us, that this is in the sphere of influence of Newport Beach. So, it's, it's part of enhancing the quality of life and the environment along the San Ana River. And it does feed into Newport Beach and is adjacent to our own parks. I'm, for $20,000, I'm supportive of just moving it forward into the budget process. If we want to pay back the general fund through the grant process, we could do something like that. But it's just, I don't want that little time issue to delay this process as they're working with other cities.
So, for now, I'm reading, I'll put a placeholder in the early look, and you can give us more feedback.
Okay. All right, thanks.
And I think if we're, if you're to do a straw poll right now, you could probably indicate the funds are available. So, when other government agencies know the funds are there. So when other government agencies know the funds are there, they accept it even if the cash is not in hand. And then before you go to the next item, is this the last?
There's probably a conflict here.
Yes, is, is, and is that your last item on this list?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so, um, due to a real property conflict, um, potential interest, actually it's outside of the zone, but I could throw a rock at it from my backyard. So it's close enough that it's going to play it safe. I'm going to excuse myself from this conversation. And then speaking of my home, uh, I was on the midnight shift with the baby and now I'm on the noon shift, so I have to leave early. Uh, thank you everyone for being here. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
So as, uh, thank you, Councilmember Muldoon. Um, on, on our next and last request from the community on this, this is more of an informational item. Um, the Boys and Girls Club is an integral part of our community and a player in our community. Um, we want to advise you that they're undertaking a renovation of their four facilities. They have an Orange County, one of them is in Newport Beach, the East Bluff area. They've been undertaking fundraising for the facility over there in East Bluff and their basically goal is about 6.5 million and I think they're up to about 5 million of that. They're going to invest 1.5 million dollars in the renovation of the club here in Newport Beach. Um, so it's just some renderings there, what they're doing. Um, the important note here is there's a new gymnasium. They're going to change their labs out, so we have more science labs in there, introduce some different technology in there. You see robotics and things to kind of bring the kids into the next generation, um, replace the roof and invest in the community, some upgraded things. And the primary thing here is there's a potential use and overlap of the gym and city programming and, and our recreational group, and Laura Detwiler could speak to that. Um, so as they develop this and they have got a significant amount of fundraising, we just wanted to make sure if there's any thoughts in the council, maybe to help with the seed money for the fundraising effort, uh, naming rights, because there, there is a joint use and a good potential for the city to gain from this piece of infrastructure. So we wanted to bring that today. The, the Boys and Girls Club representative Travis is here today and also Laura Detwiler could assist. Any questions?
Any questions from the dais? No? Um, I just, it didn't, I read somewhere, maybe this was in Laura's summary, about the schools will be, where's Laura? Newport Unified will be.
Laura's coming down. The, the school is working with them in the, in the interim to transition and work with that, but I know Laura knows the details on that.
Are they going to be contributing in any way?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council, Laura Detwiler, your Recreation and Senior Services Director. They are not contributing funds, however, they're being very good partners of the Boys and Girls Club as they look to expand programming in the schools. But also they're working with the school adjacent that will allow them to use the parking lot for overflow as we've got a really small parking lot adjacent to their club. So they're being very good partners.
Okay, that's good to know. Um, any comments? What, what, is there a specific number we're talking about?
There's not a specific direction. There was a, there's a general thought that the city might have an interest in contributing somewhere towards their fundraising effort. And we were just wondering if you have any interest in that and any dollars in mind that we might want to program in the request or how would you like to take that?
Does anyone up here have any thoughts about that? Mr. Avery?
President here with similar organizations in the city.
Uh, Laura, I, I don't know of any. Do you know? I mean, we have done, for instance, what, there is a precedent, for instance, the Girl Scout House. Uh, the city didn't contribute directly to the building, but you did give them a very favorable ground lease.
Right.
Um, and that, which is a financial contribution, I would say. So you have in the past supported various agencies. Uh, this is a, they've been a longstanding partner in our community and Laura could speak to that. There, I, I think there is some merit to, if they need it, they're giving a benefit back and we get programming out of it, but any thoughts on that, Laura?
The one, the one that comes to mind is, is some of the school district facilities where we run city programming out of. The other is the NAC. Uh, there's a public restroom there that we get a lot of drop in use that goes on down at that beachfront. And so we were part of, um, funding some of the renovation costs related to that public facility.
So Laura, what, what is our connection? I mean, it's a great organization, but then how's the city utilize that facility or does it?
Right, it, right now we do not. However, we're in conversation with them to renew their lease. Uh, that should be coming forth to the city council in 2019. Uh, it's our intention to run, uh, sports leagues during the evenings when the club isn't using them, uh, also run some recreational classes, uh, and also the facility to be available for community meetings. Uh, the, the club has said that they're very interested in that. And I think with the upgrades that they're proposing, um, that will propel us to actually start utilizing the facility. We do have access to it now, written in our lease, uh, and we intend to do that, uh, moving forward with the renewal.
Great, thank you. That's very helpful, yeah.
I have a question about, um, what is our lease agreement with the Boys and Girls Club?
Uh, it, it's essentially a no-fee lease. Uh, we've been partners with them since the early seventies. The facility sits on city property in East Bluff Park. Small portion of it is on the school district property. I think it's the basketball court that falls into their, their property. Uh, and so we, as a department, have served as a liaison to the Boys and Girls Club in making sure that they're meeting the conditions of their lease, um, which they are. Uh, I can tell you, we've been very impressed with the leadership, um, that they've shown in terms of fundraising. They've gotten all kinds of foundations to contribute. Every member of their board has contributed. Uh, private citizens of, of the community have contributed as well. Uh, we actually, um, joined them over at their Santa Ana Club, which was recently renovated, and we're just thoroughly impressed with what that looks like and the programming that it's allowed. Uh, so the thought of, of the improvements that they're making here, we think will have a great impact on our youth community. Uh, and we, we also know too that they're moving into our schools and now starting to expand on teen programming, uh, which is phenomenal because we don't have a dedicated teen, uh, facility. Uh, and so we continue to discuss where those needs are and under their leadership, uh, with their staff and also their board, uh, we're thrilled with what's going to take place at, at this club. It's going to happen this summer regardless of our contribution. Um, they, they're finalizing their construction plans and hope to complete it during the summer months and have it up and running, uh, for the fall season.
Mayor?
Knowing, uh, knowing the great work they do there, I would definitely support this project.
Yeah, I think, um, I look at, it's an absolute bargain for the city to have an organization like that where we basically give them the dirt. They've got the facilities, they're running it, they're washing the windows, cleaning the restrooms, and we aren't chipping in anything yet. But I mean, it's been a great deal and obviously when they get done, it's going to be even more, a more valuable asset, uh, to the residents. So, and we're not, you know, we're really not, we haven't put anything in and so.
I think they're asking for it.
I know. So I, and I, that's another discussion about what the appropriate amount might be and whether we, we do that. But I'm just saying right now as it stands, I just think it's been a great thing for the city. And we have several Newport Aquatic Center issues notwithstanding, it's been a great asset for the city. Uh, where these partnerships where we are able to provide the real estate and then these in, these institutions just deliver for the public and we don't have dollars going in to support the maintenance and all the rest of it on these facilities and the, and the management and the overhead is phenomenal. So I think we need to encourage it at the very least and maybe support it.
Go ahead, Mr.?
Yeah, I would definitely support this also. I have the, um, I had the pleasure of visiting and touring the Santa Ana facility not too long ago and what's taking place there for kids and families is just phenomenal. This facility is beautiful. The depth of the programs that are going on, uh, to support kids, uh, is incredible. Um, I, being a retired educator, I was particularly impressed with, with the educational services that are being offered there for, uh, kids to complete high school. And, uh, I know that's not an issue in our city, but, um, I'd, I'd like to look for, to staff, uh, for some kind of a recommendation on the amount. Uh, I think we'd all maybe appreciate that.
Yes, I agree. Uh, Laura, could you just comment? Is, are Newport Beach children 100% of the users or they're, or who uses this facility?
I'm not going to say 100%, but probably 95%.
Okay, a high level.
Because those living closest or the kids going to school obviously go close, use that facility.
They still have traveling basketball leagues that, that use the facility and they come from all over? Not so much anymore, okay.
Well, I too have visited in the Santa Ana and I think the management there is fantastic. It's really revitalized and it's an outstanding organization. So I, I'm very supportive of the organization, but I think in terms of the funding level, we need to have a, a continuing discussion on this. Um, and so we, I think we reflect the, the group up here is that we think the Boys and Girls Club is fantastic service for our community. And just as Mr. Avery said, we are providing a very low-cost rental rate for the facility, similar to the Girl Scouts. I know we have, we did not give any additional money on top of the, the favorable lease to the Girl Scouts. So I just want to be fair and equitable to other nonprofit organizations, but let's move it forward. Let's look at a solid number when it comes forward and see what, what the council agrees. Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay, that's the end of the set of projects. Um, this might be a good time then to have public comment on the, uh, project section.
Good idea. Let's have some public comments. Let me just kind of level set everybody. What time is it? About 10 after 12? We still have one more topic. We may be here till 12:30. That's maybe optimistic. So just to let you know, we're still, I don't want to be rushing through. We are, we said, give or take a few minutes on the adjourned time too, so we lost some time early in the morning. So yes, sir, please.
Thank you very much. Uh, Rick Haskell, I'm a business owner, um, and lived in Newport Beach for 30 years. Uh, talking about the old Newport development area, I have two medical office buildings. We were the first ones that built in 1999 on Old Newport Boulevard and everybody thought that was a good idea. That's why it's flourished since then. We took a rundown motel and converted it into a medical office building. It was the number one crime address for the city of Newport Beach with prostitution and drug abuse and fencing. Uh, the, the police department was very happy when we tore down that motel. Um, there's been revitalization, there's been 10 medical office buildings built on that street in the last 15 years. There's been another dozen or so that have been upgraded. Uh, it does look like hell in that area and we would like it to be upgraded. I don't think it's necessarily, uh, old time. It's very dilapidated. There's no curbs in a lot of places. There's a four-block along Old Newport Boulevard that you can't park on the street at all. So one of the proposals when we, in 1999, we turned out, we thought it was a proposal to upgrade. It turned out it was an idea only and not an actual thing. Brian Jeanette was here earlier. He's a prominent architect. He had drawn up some plans for changing the parking on that street. It's wide enough to actually do either angled parking or do a median with parking along the median, like on Avocado. Uh, and he had proposed that. Um, it's, we're putting a lot of money into that in property taxes. I know it's not a one-to-one property tax. We get it back in, in improvements, but I think that area's been revitalized enough that it needs to be upgraded. Uh, it is a throughfare for everybody coming from, from, uh, Coast Highway up north on 55, so they're coming down that street. Uh, so the traffic is heavy and we'd like to see improvements to increase the value for that area. It's dilapidated, the street is terrible. It's a combination of concrete and asphalt that there's drop-offs in the area, so sometimes the tires are going back and forth over that and creating a ruckus. The telephone poles look like something from a third world country. It's, it's terrible. It doesn't look good. So, uh, we're, we're putting money into it and we'd like the city to put some money into it.
Well, thank you. That's good input. Uh, thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mayor Dixon and city council members, my name is Dorothy Kraus. I'm speaking today to bring attention to the 2016 West Newport Streetscape Master Plan and SPON's request that its implementation be considered for the 2019 plan for Newport Beach. This request was outlined in a letter sent to you earlier this week and I'll only touch on a few of the points made in the letter. The West Newport Streetscape Master Plan was sponsored by former city council member Tony Petros and supported by SPON in response to and as a result of the creation of a height overlay district in 2015. This zoning amendment allowed for residential height exceptions in the West Newport Mesa Statistical Area A2, which is over by Coastline College, Carden Hall, Monrovia 15th Streets, and a butt spanning ranch, that area back there. The height exception was at the request of the Eptide Project proponents who wanted to add rooftop decks to their 84 three-story detached town home development located on Placentia Ave, Avenue near 16th Street. At this juncture, SPON believes that a unified, unified streetscape design would enhance the appearance of West Newport Mesa and provide for a long overdue cohesive neighborhood identity. Beautification measures would hopefully deter any further piecemeal transition through development applications, such as what we saw with the Eptide Project and the creation of a height overlay district in 2015. While the Streetscape Master Plan needs to be dusted off and reviewed for scope and costs, the overall concepts still hold true. That through streetscape beautification improved traffic circulation and parking availability, lighting to, to improve visibility and safety, implementation of walkable and complete street concepts, plus introduction of other amenities, the sense of neighborhood in this often overlooked part of Newport Beach will become a reality. I'd be happy to work with staff to help move this along. Uh, taking a phased approach to implementation might be no, an opportunity worth exploring. Um, we'd really like to see at least one small step to be taken this year, understanding the pre, the priorities that you're all confronted with. Thank you, Mayor, and council members for your consideration.
Thank you. Mr. Avery, did you have any comments?
Another area that's undergoing some change and it's mixed and I, I would like to, um, it's a little late in the game here, but definitely, uh, get it on for next year. But I think it's something we should definitely look at. The, the good thing is there's, quite a bit of work has gone into it already with this plan that Tony put forward and, uh, staff worked on. And so I think it would be good to dust it off and take a look at it at some point here.
Um, two thoughts. It could be part of the general plan update or you don't want to wait that long or? Okay, we should look at that. I actually thought we approved this. Apparently we did not.
Yeah.
We did approve it, right? I thought so. Okay, well, let's follow up on that. Any other comments up here? Mr. Hurdman, Ms. Brennan? Nope. All right, so I think we all agree, let's advance it, put, put some of it, do what, if there's something small we could do, but put the rest of it in the general plan, but we should codify it. I thought we all approved this a couple of years ago. Any other comments? No? Okay. Oh, we're public, we're in the, thank you, we're in the public comment period. Yes, thank you.
Good afternoon, council and staff. My name is Travis Witten. I'm a representative of the Boys and Girls Club. I'm also a City of Newport Beach resident. Um, I just wanted to share with council how excited the club is for this renovation project. Uh, as mentioned, this is a 6.5 million dollar investment into all four of the clubs that we operate. We're projecting about 1.5 million plus into the Newport Beach facility. It's going to allow us to serve more Newport Beach kids, um, and expand partnerships with the city of Newport in terms of program. As Laura mentioned, we're already in discussions with the Parks and Rec about men's basketball league in the evenings, as well as leveraging the building during the day when the kids aren't there to serve more Newport Beach residents in more efficient ways. So we're talking about senior programs, young parent programs, um, really partnering with the city to find out what the needs are, to see how the club and that building can better support the efforts of what the city's trying to do. Uh, as mentioned, we've raised just under 5 million dollars of our six and a half million dollar goal, all through private philanthropy. Many of the philanthropists and businesses are Newport Beach residents and businesses. Um, and I would just want to reemphasize how excited we are to improve the functionality of the building and to leverage that asset so we can all collectively do a lot more in that building. So thank you for your consideration of support. Um, we're grateful for, um, everything that staff has provided to date and more importantly, once we go through renovations this summer, what we're going to be able to do once we relaunch the building. relaunch the building. And Mayor, in terms of your comment with Newport Mesa School District, they're also helping us to provide space during the summer months when the club is going to be under construction, so we don't have to stop summer, key summer programs, and they're going to allow us to use space at East Bluff Elementary, so we can continue programs without any interruption for the families and kids that we serve. So, thank you. If anyone has any questions, please let me know, I'm happy to help address those.
Well, we look forward to working with you as we go forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Any other public comments? Please come forward.
Tom Colister, Newport Reet resident. I'm also a member of the Board of Directors of the Boys and Girls Club, and a question was raised about what other benefits the club will bring to the city of Newport Beach. Club has long been known for its basketball program. We are expanding that into other sports activities, but I think one of the most important aspects is that part of our, the club's strategic plan is to, as we have done with other cities, Santa Ana, Orange and the like, is to use, is to partner with the school, in this, in this case in particular, Coron del Mar High School, where we can develop a teen program. When those classrooms in the late afternoon are empty, we'll have a place for our teens to go and to continue our educational and other sports and activities programs with that as well, which will bring great benefit to the city of Newport Beach. Thank you very much.
Very good, thank you. Next comment, please.
Yes, my name is Jim Mosher. Regarding the Boys and Girls Club, from what we heard from the previous speaker and from the slide, it sounds like their private fundraising program is already in progress and going along pretty well, so it's not like they need seed money from the, from the city to make that go. And I just agree with the, I agree with the council members who, who seem to feel that the Boys and Girls Club is getting a very major benefit through the lease, and that probably is, is sufficient to, to meet the city's obligation towards it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next comment, please.
Afternoon. Honorable Mayor and members of city council, my name is Max Johnson, and I'm a 24-year resident of Newport Beach. In regard to the slide on the Santa Ana Avenue and Avon Street Trail slope, I just wanted to give a couple of my suggestions and input in regard to, I believe Diane already mentioned to Dave about the parking lot across A Market, and I believe that's a city-owned parking lot? No, it isn't?
We'd like it, but it's Caltrans.
Okay, Caltrans. So in regard to that parking lot, I, I know something that comes to mind, whether I'm at A or just driving, is the, the crosswalks there is really, really difficult to walk across, even when I'm driving a vehicle and I'm exiting A Market or A Restaurant. It's, you know, almost nearly impossible to get out within a minute, because the con, the consistency of the cars turning there, yet alone for the pedestrians or bicyclists. So my suggestion to city staff would be to potentially maybe revise the crosswalk there, to maybe make it larger or brighter, maybe kind of what we did on the Peninsula with the lines, and then maybe have a larger sign there, maybe flashing, because there are a lot of people that directly just sprint across, and it's kind of dangerous. And then another thought I had, I don't know the impacts that it would have, I'm thinking that there might be negative consequences to adding a crosswalk, but if, if you're a bicyclist or a visitor to Babo Peninsula, there's not many entryway points to, from PCH to access across the street there. So if people are coming off Babo Peninsula and they enter PCH on a bicycle, coming from like Brad's District in Newport Heights, they have to go all the way down to the cross street at China Palace, would crosswalk there. So my idea would be, there's a lot of traffic on both sides, so I don't know if it'd be feasible to do a crosswalk directly where the exit from Peninsula Point would be, or across the way there. I don't know if, that would probably have a negative impact on traffic, but that's just a thought. And then the same thing with going around the loop, getting onto the Peninsula Bridge. That's always at night, a very dark-lit area, and I know, I typically always try to keep an extra eye out, but there's a lot of people that try to walk on that section there, too, and there is generally a homeless man or woman that is on the corner there. But people don't see the people trying to get across there, and so I've, you know, witnessed countless times where residents just slam on the brakes or actually just speed past when someone's halfway in the crosswalk there. I don't know if you know what I'm talking about, but on the loop there. So my suggestion would be to make, again, the crosswalk more visible or increase signage there, so residents or people entering on the Peninsula can more visibly see people that are crossing there at both points, across A Market and the entry.
Good, good comments. Thank you, Max. Any other public comments? All right, bring it back. Any comments up here? All right, so Mr. Webb, do you feel you have your marching orders?
I think we do.
Okay, all right. Ms. City Manager, where do you want to go next?
Well, we have one final section to cover, which is the update on continuing initiatives. I will say on this, and in the interest of time, as we're fast approaching 12:30, that we'd like to wrap up. Really, I brought these to, to provide, I wanted to just provide a very high-level update on what we're doing on terms of homeless strategies and on the airport, primarily because there are additional resources that will be required of the city, and as we're going through our budget planning, that you will be seeing these items coming back. So I think it wasn't to have a detailed discussion, because that will be coming shortly through, for example, on the homeless contract with CityNet to provide enhanced social work services in partnership with our homeless officer there in terms of moving forward. And on the airport, there are, under the, of course, always that, kind of the tent pole of protecting the settlement agreement, within that, we are still looking at ensuring ways to find the quietest, safest, least polluting departures, and a lot of efforts are going under through that, and really requiring some consultant resources to, to assure us as we move through various initiatives going on through there. But both of these items will be coming back to council with more detailed discussion and looking at the resources there. So I think at this point, that's maybe the most I'll say on this, and certainly, since it's noticed, it could take public comment as well.
Well, I do, thank you, Grace. I do want to add, because this, according to the Brown Act, I guess, because this is the first public meeting since I returned from Washington on city business, I need to briefly, very briefly, and I'll say more on February 12th, a report on airport-related activities and my conversations with our newly-elected Congressman Harley Ruda and other California congressional delegation on FAA, the FAA reauthorization bill that the city supported and worked actively. Mr. Hurdman, Mr. Muldoon, and myself went to Washington a year ago, in April, to seek support for the reauthorization bill that, among other things, would emphasize a noise, a quality of life, noise and, and air quality, issues related to airports and, and takeoffs and landings. And those, that language is in the bill that was signed into law, and so now it's the follow-up, working with our elected representatives. The good news for California is that Harley Ruda and Grace Napolitano, who is the highest-ranking Democrat member of Transportation and Infrastructure, which is the committee in the House of Representatives that deals with airport and water issues, both Ms. Napolitano and Harley Ruda are very supportive of supporting Newport Beach, so more to come on that. So I was very much encouraged, and working, continuing to work, it's very important. I see some of our community group representatives here. That has an impact, certainly with our congressman, who's having a lunch over in Newport Fashion Island that we're all going to go to in a moment, because he's meeting with local electors. But now, I've met with him three times since he's been elected, and he's been very supportive of what we need to do, and I know the community group influence with him has been influential as well. So that is an ad hoc official report, but I have reported to the, to the people. Okay, thank you. Any other comments up here about homelessness or airport issues? No? No? Public comments on either one of those two items?
Diane, can I just?
Sure, of course.
Can I just thank you publicly for what you accomplished in Washington the week you were there regarding the airport?
Well, thank you. We're working hard.
Excellent work, excellent work.
Well, I hope we can thank Harley and our congressional delegation to, to Kenya, to work hard. So thank you, Mr. Hurdman. Public comments, if you would come and, and make your comments, appreciate it. Thank you. If anybody else is interested in speaking once we get or close to the microphone, thank you.
Last week was the...
Could you identify yourself, please?
Yes, I'm Hoi An Yip. So last week was about the homeless. Ms. O'Neil, thanks for going to a point in time after city council night, early in the morning. I have been helping homeless kids for 10 years. I went to a lot of events and I cooked for some of the events, and I'm still working on the perfect mindset. So I think that's something everybody can work on. So my public comment is not only for the city council, it's actually also for other NGOs, for everybody. Oh, my PowerPoint. So last week, UCI hosted UNICEF Hunger Banquet. I went, I thought I knew the drill, food and homeless topics, that kind of thing. So you're first checking outside, you get a color sticker, and then you walk in, and so there was trays of food on this long table, nothing fancy, you know, orange chicken, Chinese don't eat orange chicken. So, and then the guy in front of me, so they, they put the food on the plate, they hand it to you. So the guy in front of me got a plate this full, and he said, "I can't eat this much." So my plate had a little bit of rice and a little bit beans, I was like, "What's going on here?" And so he said, "Your color sticker shows you're poor." And so for the first time in my life, I thought, "Orange chicken was desirable." So I thought that was a good mindset, a psychological click with inequality. So that was the first thing of the night. The event was great. The model is created by a company called Oxfam. If you go onto their website, they have a little YouTube to show you the event. It's really cool, it's fun. So I was just thinking, there's a lot of outreach events on, about the homeless now, and often there's the food. I would recommend this model. They provide a toolkit, and they also help you with publicity. My little suggestion.
Thank you very much. Any other public comments? Seeing none? All right. Let me just flip to the, any other comments up here? I don't want to ignore anyone. Well, I want to thank everyone for, thank staff, Grace, and team, thank you for putting together a robust dialogue of good questions and some important new directions to consider for our future. I think this will certainly, clearly inform our budget discussions as, as we begin, because Mr. Mayor Protem, we're starting those discussions in the Finance Committee next meeting, this immediate next meeting, correct? So we encourage everyone who's interested to follow this through the Finance Committee and ultimately through our public meetings at City Hall, well, all the meetings are public. I want to thank all of you for coming out this morning. This is a great way to spend a rainy day, and thank you for your interest in our community, and we'll see you again on February 12th, and next year when we do it again. Thank you very much.